Can we glorify you today? We thank you, God, as you will order our steps on today concerning the county, concerning the citizens, God, that we would make the right decision. We ask you to cover those that have authority over us in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Let's leave it. To the flag of the United States of America. To the rebellion of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Attorney clerk, roll call please.
This is a regular meeting of the Henry County, Door of County Commissioners being held on Tuesday, June 12, 2018, at 5:00 p.m. in the City Commission chambers in Closon, Florida. In attendance are Chairman Mr. Willis, Vice Chair Emma Byrd, Commissioner Darrell Harris, Commissioner Michael Swindle, Commissioner Carson Turner, County Administrator Charles Chapman, County Attorney Mark Lapp, Deputy Clerk Ken Berdow.
Thank you. Mr. Chapman, you have a... Mr. Honorable Chairperson and members of the board, two things real quick. One is a simple housekeeping item of wanting to remove the placeholder agenda item 7A1 under staff reports, which is the update on the Customs Border Patrol Jobs Growth Grant. I talked with each one of you throughout the day. There's no need for discussion at this meeting, no action to be taken, and I'll make sure that we put something on the record at our office regarding that particular grant. The other item is oftentimes as Chief Executive Officer, I need to own something in front of the board, and that is ultimately the failure of keeping up Ridgeline Cemetery for Memorial Day weekend. It was not done according to what we had planned. I take full responsibility for that. We have addressed the issues internally with staff as well as our protocols and our scheduling. We believe that we have solved at least eighty-five percent of the problem, but we were looking for some additional solution sets in terms of landscaping options, looking at some different approaches to keeping Ridgeline in a better condition than what it was, but I wanted to make a public apology to this board as well as our residents for the poor condition of Ridgeline Cemetery on Memorial Day weekend.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. Does anyone have any comments towards that or questions about it?
That was... And we know that that's a pressure point and an open nerve that, you know, our community has all year long, especially on that weekend, so I appreciate you giving those comments. Are we leaning toward anything specifically with... We talked about shrubbery trees, plants, or something back along the border. Do we... Are we leaning any direction with that?
We're still in process of developing what is going to be the most attractive but yet maintenance-friendly. We know we don't have a ton of humans to keep up the... Any additional or labor-intensive landscaping options. We're looking for some guidance. I believe we've reached out to some of the garden clubs in the area to get some ideas, but ultimately, we will be bringing a landscaping plan back for the board to consider so that you know what we're doing, when, how, and how that's going to affect our operations and maintenance moving forward.
Yeah, okay. And just because of the profession that I am in and was in, landscaping takes human capital. It takes people, and we just don't do small well. We just don't have the people to do that. So, I would encourage it to be something low maintenance, no maintenance, like a fence, you know, or a complete partnership, but even those are iffy and comes and goes with personnel, and so I would highly encourage y'all to think about that.
Yes, sir. One thing that we have begun to realize is that when you need a more intensive cleaning, we really do need to leverage our community a little bit better. There's an everyday maintenance that we need to own and keep it up, but as we're coming to major events like Memorial Day, Veterans Day, et cetera, it may be that we're looking at partnering with some of our members of the community and open source this solution a little bit and do a more intensive volunteer service centered along with county staff to get the cemeteries up to top-notch for those particular special events.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. What Mr. Swindle just said is a very good point. The decorative fence would be a lot less maintenance, it'd be a lot... You can make that very attractive as it looks as it comes in. Most of your cemeteries that you go to now, especially your, you know, your state facilities, they're decorative fencing and it's very nice wrought iron, you know, block, brick, different things. So, like the fence we have there now, it looks nice, but I would suggest looking at a different means of the actual mortar and brick of itself is really tough to keep clean. So, as we move forward in this, we really need to tell you, you know, take a few different options and look at them and go forth with that.
Mr. Chair, what are we thinking from a timeline, though? Have y'all gotten further along... Further enough along in this to say August or November? Do you have any idea?
We can bring something back to you, say, in the next board meeting or the one in July if you would like, so you guys can have your...
Just to reiterate what Commissioner Swindle said, you know, it is an open nerve. This is something that is really sensitive to people, and they want to see action. Obviously, we dropped the ball, and I appreciate you owning that. We can't do that. You know, little things to me, I think they go a long way, or I don't know... I don't know how our extension goes out towards those Royal Palm trees or the ditch that's right there in front of it, but I mean, it's like, I don't know, it's just odd how we mow up to some stuff and just have an arbitrary reason why we don't clean it off. You know, it's kind of like getting a haircut and you don't get the edge or the sideburns cleaned, you know? I'm notorious for doing that all the time, but, you know, I go two weeks long, but that's my head. It ain't everybody's cemetery, so I just think that we need to kind of tighten up if we could on that. And I know, I mean, this is South Florida. Welcome to, you know, days where you just get completely rained out and/or the grass is growing so fast as probably every other event, so every other day event. But, um, yeah, we have to stay on top of this, and I am looking forward to hearing some public responses back to what they want to see out there, and obviously, it's all within our financial means as well.
You know, and I believe they say we have not because we asked not, so I think by putting it, you know, putting a little bit back on the public, I believe they will assist us in keeping it clean because they're very sensitive with it, but we haven't asked, so we have to ask to make sure it happens, and they basically just want to keep it up, so, you know, I'd like them to thank you for taking ownership.
One other thing too, though, I think there needs to be a clarification of sorts. I routinely get asked, "Why do y'all not weed, you know, within my area or something?" And I don't know how hard or how long it has been, but obviously, Ms. Butler goes over, I believe, or someone in your office goes over a list of what is your responsibility, what is not.
We give them a home.
Yes, ma'am. But, you know, I mean, you're probably talking about some instances where that's two family generations ago that they acquired that. So, I think there's a fair amount of misinformation about what the property owner, if you will, is responsible for versus what the county is responsible for, and I think that that's something that we should make available as well.
Yes, sir.
With any of our mediums, you know, that we get that out to people on, so...
Yes, sir. That goes out every time you meet a family, you hand them a pack, you explain that to them. Once the coping goes around the lot, we are no longer allowed to go inside that lot. That becomes the family's responsibility, and the problem is you have families that there's no one left to take care of it. When they're unsightly or eyesores, we mark them, but it's a process.
Can you spray?
You can't just take it out. You can't go inside there, no.
No, can you spray? Can you stand outside and spray in?
You're not supposed to be in that property. That's no longer... You're not supposed to be on that at all.
Okay.
But this is where... This is that golden opportunity to me.
Okay.
Where, listen, obviously, the ball was dropped. That's irrelevant. Nobody's sitting here pointing fingers and saying, "Why didn't this happen? I'm so mad at you, Charles, you're dumb." Nobody has said that. It wasn't Charles' fault. Charles somewhere else. I hope that Charles isn't making sure that the cemetery's mowed every day. We pay him a lot of money to do other things, and he has a lot of directors under him that do that sort of stuff. But I think this was an awesome opportunity because a ton of people rallied, went out there and made it happen, and I think to the point that you're making, Commissioner Willis, if we have that running list, if we know what those potential eyesores are time and time again, we queue that up. I met with a Miss Iglesias this morning from Closon Christian School who's queuing back up the Random Act of Kindness Club, you know? And I think that's, you know, that's another one of those service-based projects where we can see our community rally around something and get on board with each other and, you know, get people enthralled about giving back, even though you're going to get nothing in return other than a pat on the back and a good feeling in your tummy.
The Honor Society used to do that as well with the schools. Those kids would come out. We'd provide all the materials they needed, all the tools, gloves, whatever the case may be. They would actually come out, pull weeds, they would actually clean, scrub headstones that hadn't been scrubbed in years.
Yes, sir.
I don't think they... Well, I know they haven't done it in quite a few years, but that was a program they were doing that with, and it gives them the points towards their community service that they need when the college is, you know, when they start to ask, so those are things that's, you know, is open as well, but, you know, you're going to look in these cemeteries, you're going to realize too now, a lot of the complaints we used to get were the headstone sinking. We're not in the headstone business. We don't need to be in the headstone business. If we go start pulling headstones up, we start moving headstones, we bust a headstone, we're going to drop a lot of money.
Yeah.
Aiken Davis and several others, when they're out there, they do that for us, so there's a lot in the cemeteries we really need to address. The well, for one, once we come back with a price on what we're going to do, it needs to be a turnkey deal. Let's go ahead and fix it while we're there if we're going to look at it. Let's get the situation taken care of, so next year when it's dry season, we still have water, and we're not paying an arm and two legs for it. So, there's a lot of things we need to look at there, so it'd probably be good just to really focus on that.
There's a well over here.
There is a well, but it's no longer used. That's on city water.
How are they watering?
City water.
And they can afford that?
No, we can't.
We, it's not they, it's us.
It's us.
We can't afford that?
No, sir.
There's a whole bunch of water right beside me.
The reason for the well was, the well was there, and I can tell you eighteen years ago when I first come on board, it had just switched, and a lot of people, once again, as Commissioner Turner said, they were misinformed. They were led to believe that the stains on the headstones and the slates were caused by the water, and it was not caused by the water. It's caused by the acidity in the soil causes those to stain and discolor. So, there's a lot of things there. Once we address this, and it's not just that cemetery, that cemetery is probably the most used cemetery that we have. It is so close, it's so convenient, and the rest of our cemeteries do not get the activity that that one does. But they're all cemeteries, you know, we need a lot of work in all of them.
I completely agree, and I don't think that we need to limit this conversation to just Ridgeline. It needs to be fortunado, and both even the old and the new cemetery in Harlem.
Right.
They all need to be taken into account, and I would also love to know what y'all's thought process is associated with how the expansion is going to go, you know? Because you brought that up last time, Commissioner Willis and yourself, that, you know, we're running out of room, and we have land, and we need to look at it. So, it needs to be a whole cell.
Is somebody working on that?
Yes, sir. We're working in conjunction with the engineer's office, and we'll be bringing a plan back to you as soon as we get some plans put into action and how we're going to pay for it.
Like a phase one, two?
Right, right, because it's very expensive.
Yeah.
As we'd said before, you can look at a quarter to three-quarters of a million just to get to the phase going, so we got a lot of cemetery stuff with...
I'm sorry.
Once we come back to that.
What was that again? Number again?
A quarter of a million to three-quarters of a million. Those are not just holding the wind numbers. I mean, when you start looking at it, it's going to go quick. There's a lot of work to do there, so... And that's just... That's in phases. We didn't... We did not design this to go out and do it all at once because we couldn't afford that, so...
So, you ought to get a plan put together prior?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, Mr. Chair, if I might, we're going to be dusting off of that plan for the benefit of all the commissioners, and we'll be discussing this through the budget process, so we... This needs to be a budget item that we discuss.
Okay. All right. Moving forward, we're going to open with the bids. We got a bid twenty-eighteen dash oh eight, Construction Services in Connection with a Francisco Street Improvement from Sonora Avenue.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve the low bid from Lynch.
So, you got that motion?
Got a motion from Commissioner Turner, second from Commissioner Swindle. Any further discussion on that?
We're going to get our tiger paws.
We're going to do it.
Not through the contract. Road and Bridge is going to do it.
Road and Bridge will do them.
All right.
I did them last time.
You did? Good, you got the jig for it?
Somebody called, asked me that, though.
All right.
Sounds like we got a volunteer, Shane.
I looked with the city.
They ain't going to be little tiger paws. They ain't going to be big tiger paws.
Piece of plywood.
Okay.
Being about five teenagers did it in two hours.
Sweet, cheaper than twenty thousand dollars, huh?
I'll do it for that.
So would I.
All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Can I ask a follow-up question to that? Because it sort of pertains to that road, but it sort of does not. We are in maintenance, and you and I sort of had this conversation, I believe, of WCO and Francisco and Sonora.
That's South Francisco.
Right.
WCO and Sonora.
And Sonora, correct?
Yes, in the city limits.
In the city limits.
Right.
Maybe Attorney Lapp and fellow board members. So, we're talking about paving both of those within the next short period of time, right? Or all three of those within the next short period of time?
WCO is at sixty percent plans. This contract you're approving tonight, we'll get that signed, execute it, and move forward with it, and then Sonora got to negotiate a contract for design services, but we'll be paving it shortly.
At what point do we say these are within city limits, they're paved? Thank you, here's your new road, we're out.
They won't take it. We tried that.
When? They ain't done it in ten years.
Well, we tried it years ago, and they said, "That's your road, keep it," which...
I remember Steve McCow said a whole bunch of stuff. They were going to build a casino one time on Lake Okeechobee, too.
Why would they take it if we're going to keep it up?
We're not going to keep it up.
But we're not going to.
We just paved it. There you go. It's not going to cost you anything in the next...
Congratulations, you have a nice new road. Good luck in the future.
Okay, Shane, turn it over to them, see, and do that next...
They got to accept it.
Is that Attorney Lapp or we? I'll need to look at them. There's probably a statute on the subject. I'll have to look into that and get back with the board. I would just like to officially say we intend to turn these roads over once they are paved.
I second the tough guy.
That's the uptake part.
Yeah.
So, we'll let Mark tell them.
That would be great, though. And I don't think, Commissioner Swindle, you're saying anything other than we just... We want to limit our maintenance of what we have, and we have a ton of roads in unincorporated county that we are responsible for, so... Let them look at it.
We don't want any city roads.
We don't need to be in the city taking care of anything. They need to own that, and we need to own worse than unincorporated county.
Or developers' roads, right, Commissioner Harris?
There you go, either one.
Unless we know the developer, then we'll take the road.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
Shane, take care of that.
Unless we don't like the developer, though, we won't take the road again.
Okay, moving forward.
Okay, jabs.
Bids RFQ twenty-eighteen dash twelve, Construction Manager for the Dallas B. Townsend Ag Center Expansion.
I move Chris Damm.
Motion by Commissioner Harris, second by Commissioner Turner. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Is there a timeframe associated with that project?
There's a timeframe with the grant. I don't recall what it is. Do you know, Janet?
DA CSD, extension of twelve thirty-nine.
End of this year.
End of this year.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. To begin or to complete?
To complete.
Oh, that ain't going to happen.
We've already had a year extension.
I remember, yeah.
I don't think it's going to take this long to do the project, but...
Okay.
It's estimated to be a two-hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand-dollar project.
Engineering's won't take so long, but we got the State Engineer of the Year, so it won't take us that long.
It used to be.
No, it still is.
He better not be engineering on this job.
When's his term up?
It's never.
Okay.
Okay, next bid is twenty-eighteen dash thirteen, Construction Services, National Reservicing forty drive from South Cowboy Way to eighty.
Move that, take step option one.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Harris, second by Commissioner Byrd. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I do have one little quick question on that, Shane. Is that going to be an open-grade service, or are we going to ready to use asphalt in there?
No, it won't be open-graded. It'll be hot mix.
Just wanted to make sure.
What's that mean, Commissioner Willis?
It's the stone and tar. It's basically an open grade. It's like a cobble road with tar over it, is what it looks like.
Okay, okay. So, what Henry Island Boulevard is right now?
That's the one Rock put in.
Might as well go ahead and put the bricks back in.
That's Rock's ride, the first one. Rock put the first one in.
Blaming on Rock, well, he's here to defend himself.
About thirty days.
Thirty-day guarantee?
It's done in thirty days.
Yeah, and had holes in it in sixty.
Okay, that's going to take us... We got one more here. Twenty-eighteen dash eleven, Ship Rehabilitation Bids for seven homes.
Just asking for approval for the bids that's been presented for the seven homes for ship.
Move to approve.
Second. Sabrina Gadsden, Henry County.
Motion by Commissioner Harris, second by Commissioner Turner. Is any further discussion on this?
No.
Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Gadsden.
I was just asking, Ms. Sabrina, I got all kinds of phone calls today, so you know what party there was, so I'd like to know.
That's going to bring us to the consent agenda.
I'm going to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Swindle, second by Commissioner Turner. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Seeing nothing on the awards and appearances, going to move to the public hearings. These will be hearings to the public once we get into these hearings, if you'd like to speak, if you would. There's a form you can fill out for us up here. The first one is going to be the adoption of amendments to Employee Background Screening Ordinance.
Motion to approve said ordinance?
Second.
We got a motion by Commissioner Turner, second by Commissioner Swindle. Is there any further discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to address this ordinance? Seeing none, any further discussion on the board? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next adoption, the option is going to be to the solid waste ordinance.
Okay, so the gist, what are we trying to accomplish here, Mark?
These are just cleanup ones that we realized in reading through the ordinance some time ago that we had some out-of-place, outdated language.
Okay.
You know, the television sets, most of those can go curbside now. They're not household, excuse me, they're not bulk solid waste, so we're clarifying that. RV parks regulated under chapter five thirteen are supposed to be considered commercial units, not residential units, so we clarified that.
That means, so let me ask this, that means you can put your TV on the side of the road on the first one, they're going to pick it up, it's not a household hazardous waste anymore?
It's... I misstated when I said household. I meant to say bulk solid waste. It's not bulk solid waste, it's traditional household waste for, other than the big screen. Big screen TVs are still bulk, but your standard televisions are just regular pickup.
What qualifies as, you know, like, I guess, is there weight? Because the reason why I ask is, there was a large boxed TV on the side of Hookers Point Road on a residence, on a lot that had no residence on it for quite some time. I didn't even look up to see if it has a solid waste assessment on it. Currently, today on Matthew Loop, there's another one that I'm thinking of. We're going to get that cleaned up, though, I think, Saturday or Friday, and I'm just wondering, you know, what's the cutoff there on that? How does that play?
Yeah, well...
You know what I mean?
Yeah, well, large is the big screen.
That's the old box TVs.
Yeah, it's the old ones, the big furniture kinds of TVs.
Takes two people to pick it up.
Does anyone have that TV anymore?
Nah.
She's got it. I mean, Mr. Kelly does, it's his dresser. It's his catch-all.
With a new TV sitting on top of it.
It is, no, absolutely. I'll send you a picture of it. It's awesome.
So, this is just cleanup stuff?
Right, that, yes, it is, and then the garbage receptacles, you know, you can be over thirty-five gallons because our standard ones from our hauler are over thirty-five, so our ordinance was just a little bit behind in that regard.
Mark, on the second one, the RVs are going to be treated as... Does that mean that they can now have a dumpster and they couldn't before, or...
They can... Well, no, they could always have a dumpster, it's just that they were assessed as a residential... Some of them, we were kind of scattered in how they got assessed, but there's a statute that says that if it's an RV park regulated under chapter five thirteen, it cannot be assessed as a residential unit. It can only be assessed as a commercial facility.
Okay.
And then for commercial facilities, you may choose to have a dumpster, or you may choose to have can service, but it's all per a commercial account. It's not the residential special assessment that goes on the tax bill.
Okay.
That's the clarification, really.
Okay.
There's nothing between those park models or the buses, there's no difference between them, so a park model's not a residential unit?
If it's an RV park regulated under chapter five thirteen. Every RV park is not regulated under... Well, mo... Excuse me. RV parks are regulated under that, but mobile home parks and some other facilities that do have the come-and-go kinds of units, those aren't necessarily regulated under five thirteen. We have a list of all the five thirteen ones, and I, you know, like, I think like the KOA is and five thirteen regulated, Grandma's Grove is, and so those, they'll be treated as commercial and not as residential.
Okay.
But mobile home facilities, those are still residential.
Well, they're there year-round, right?
Well, some of those RVs are year-round, you know, and they're... If they're an RV regulated under five thirteen, they're supposed to be treated as commercial.
Okay.
Five thirteen is health department. Health department regulates and does inspections of those places.
Garbage receptacles, real quick, it says the thirty-five gallon capacity, if they are containers provided by the franchise hauler. So, the ones that have them now, if it's not provided by the franchise hauler, are we going to have issues with that, or...
Well, I don't know. I mean, currently, we say nothing over thirty-five. Practically, we've allowed over thirty-five if it's the franchise hauler's larger container. I don't know what we do.
And what we've told Mark, and what we've told everybody is, at least what I remember telling people, and I've said this a hundred times, I've said it once, I don't care if you put ten fifty-five gallon drums out on the side, if you put it in that drum and it I don't care if you put ten fifty-five gallon drums out on the side. If you put it in that drum and it comes from your house, they're gonna throw it away. That's what the hauler has told us.
I don't know how.
And then going back to it, the ones I'm getting complaints from are the ones that say exactly that. If it's not an actual garbage receptacle.
That they issued.
Or one you bought from Walmart. If you put a drum out there, they won't touch it.
Oh, yeah, we gotta fix that.
That's some of the complaints I'm getting is it has to be an actual garbage receptacle. And then I've had several that said, they were told they were too big of a receptacle. They didn't have the lift on the truck to dump it. That's what I'm asking the questions here before we.
Well, I'm, this, I can tell you, the reason for changing the ordinance was because of the RV park issue. That was the impetus for going in here and tinkering. In the course of that, Tony Wright, our special district director, pointed out that we had this thirty-five gallon cap on container capacity. And she said, you know, our toders that the hauler provides are bigger than that. So let's clarify that that's allowed. So we're trying, we're only trying to fix what she identified as a problem. I hadn't heard, I don't know if you've heard, of things being too large, not being picked up, things being not the right size. I haven't heard that.
I have.
Well, I have had things that was overweighted and they accepted them because Shane would call and make sure. But they have picked it up. But as long as it was inside, they picked it up.
I'm doing something wrong. Because when you call and Darryl calls, it happens. When I call, we can't do that.
I just wanna make sure we weren't going to get in a situation to where as we have people that have already purchased the extra receptacles and now they're not gonna use them.
Well, is there anybody that's even in that boat? Is there, I mean, they've all got the big hauler providing.
Oh, we don't. They all don't.
I don't.
There are certain areas that does not.
No.
I'm pretty sure that Pioneer and I don't think all the Montura has them. And I think.
As most of the unincorporated side were in my.
That was part of, that was part of the gig. Those should all be, I'm almost certain, we need to go back through that. That was part of the deal. We wanted receptacles to everyone.
Listen to me.
I'm listening.
If you had one, I'm talking, if you had one and it was stolen, you're responsible for replacing it. So if somebody kind of took yours and put it at their house, they might have had it. But if it was taken, you're responsible for getting another one, which is seventy-five dollars. So they might have had one, but if somebody borrowed it from them, I'm used to word borrowed.
Well, I'm gonna use stole, number one. Number two, I'm gonna say though, Ms. Byrd, when we were, this is one of those things that we just have, we have, we have to follow up on. And I'm asking you all to follow up on this aggressively. And the reason being is this was part of the renegotiation discussion. I remember that vividly. And they, and they should be following through on their aspect of things.
For the record, Shane Parker.
You're gonna tell me I think that I'm wrong and that we had a cost associated with that.
You're on the right track.
And I'm pretty sure that the cost was, was, we were gonna find a way to make that happen.
For the record, Shane Parker, county engineer. Well, we had certain areas where we have curbside pickup. And we were doing the negotiations. I came back with a price to get curbside carts. It was too much. Y'all wanted it down. So we worked out what we could at, I think it was two thirty-five, and basically it stayed where it was at. There is no, there's only certain areas that have that automatic service. Harlem, Port LaBelle, and Hookers. It's very limited.
Yeah, I've got a gentleman who's got two blocks away. They have the service and two blocks to his house. They don't provide that. They didn't provide the toders. They don't provide anything. I would ask you about it. That's what I was told. Well, when this was originally adopted, this area was taken out of that. And this area, so there's a lot of, there's a lot of areas that, that's what I'm asking the question. There's a lot of people who purchase these yourself. And once, you know, if the hauler comes by and says, we're no longer picking those up, well, then you need to provide them a tote.
Right. They should be picking up the totes now. I can probably understand why they won't do a drum because there's no handle to grab, but, you know, Walmart trash cans, metal trash cans, they should pick up as, if it's a receptacle.
If there's having a problem, the phone will be ringing.
And I don't, I wanna say in the contract language, it says a receptacle. It doesn't really go into like details of why they won't. The only time I heard they won't pick up trash, which is a Montura, was there was an inconsistency among the hauler. They wouldn't pick it up out of a bin. If you go to Pioneer, there's a, I call them farm crates, three by four. They're about this high off the ground. People were putting their trash cans in there so they wouldn't get knocked over. Some people went a little bit further in Montero and raised them off the ground and set fence posts in the Central County Water Control District right away and enclosed them in. So they had to come up high and lift them up. The hauler wasn't wanting to do that. But we worked out a solution where they will pick them up out of the bins on the ground, no problem, because the contract doesn't exclude that. It says if you put it in a receptacle, they will pick it up and dispose of it. So we can, I believe we can trump that argument if there is an issue.
Well, the other part of this is, the other part of the argument would be is, they pay the same amount for garbage as everyone else, but the hauler provided them with a receptacle and everyone else has to go buy their own receptacle.
I don't disagree with that. And I think that this is something that we, we need to tear into that. I'm dying to get educated. And if that was just a bad negotiation on our deal, then we need to revisit it. But, and maybe that's, we need to, we need to start. As that fund replenishes itself, then we need to make it right so that everybody has a tote. But this is, it's not what I recall with my direct conversation. Obviously, that's the unfortunate situation of we can't all chat prior to and say, hey, this is where I was. And so it's probably a negotiation that I got hoodwinked on and looking at the fine print. I've done that before, so.
It had something to do with the cost factor.
Cost, yeah, cost that we, we were looking at the toders, how much it was cost a toter. We're looking at going to two days a week versus one day a week. There wasn't really a cost savings. And then it was gonna be like two hundred and eighty something dollars, I think. You guys about stroked out on that. So we went down to like two thirty-five.
Yep. Well, you're talking recently, though. This goes back.
Yeah, that was to go back, but we were in negotiations, original. But we were talking about, you set it up to negotiations last summer about make it work. And you sat here as a board and said, two forty, and then you want to go two twenty-five. And I said, please don't do that. And you got the two forty, you went two forty, and we made it work. We come out two thirty-fives.
But it never corrected the problem of the original contract. Whereas two blocks over, they provided those people with receptacles and these other people are just told you're out of luck. Yet they're paying the two forty that the other people are paying.
I understand exactly what you're saying. And I think what Shane is saying to us, Mr. Chair.
I understand, yeah.
And that, but that frustrates me because I don't think that that was clearly articulated to us. I was, and I remember, I remember, and if y'all, and if y'all remember it clearly that I'm wrong, please say it. Say.
Because I thought it was everybody.
What I remember, Commissioner Byrd, what I remember was, they were gonna phase it in. You know, there was, you know, Flag Hole has been hot about my having totes from day one when somebody in Hookers Point had a tote. So I remember having that discussion. Y'all are gonna be able to implement that in, right? Yes, absolutely, was the call.
It's all at North LaBelle's, just like it was.
That's not how I remembered. I remember the discussion from the hauler saying that they only did it in areas where.
The volume justified.
The, the volume justifies it. And when you got into our rural areas that the population was more spread out, it didn't warrant the expense of the truck and the technology to make that happen. Personally, I think we gave up that negotiation point when we decided not to make them bid it out. I think if we'd have had them go, if we would have went to bid on that, we could have been sitting here today with them. But we, we chose to not do that, which I think was a bad decision on our part.
But it might have been more than two thirty-five.
Might have been less.
Might have been one fifty.
Yep. Oh, you gotta consider now, half of this is already purchased. So you're not looking at purchasing the whole hog. You just gotta buy the other half of it.
I don't disagree. I, I still think it's worth, I guess what my request would be then, and I don't need a time sensitive. I mean, I'd say, by the, so we're going July, then we have budget. We're gonna be tied up with budget until at least mid-September, right?
Yes.
So I would like, I would like this issue vetted by the first meeting in October for us to be able to, if you could peruse that contract, tell us exactly what we agreed to. If there was any language as it related to, we're gonna call it totes, the waste hauler issued trash can being disseminated countywide. If this says absolutely not, that we had no intention of doing that, which I'm thinking that's what you're gonna say it is saying, then I'd love to know what that cost is associated to make it so that everybody has a tote.
Yeah, and I'm not talking about the automated chain. I'm not talking, that's not what I'm talking about. I do understand the point they made with that, those certain areas, they was gonna have the automated service. That's not what I'm talking about at all. I'm talking about.
Just having.
I'm just having the garbage can, Commissioner Swindle. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. And that's why I remember I was so adamant about it. I said, they don't, it makes sense you're telling me that they don't have enough volume on the four roads of Flag Hole and going down Taft, and that's just the area you service and all of that in Montura. I'm not gonna argue that fact with you. But what I'm saying is just from a uniformity standpoint, I know that those constituents, and I mean, I got hammered by people in Montura and Flag Hole saying, why does your neighborhood have garbage cans and we do not? And I said, I'm gonna look into that. And so it was something that I was adamant about.
You're talking about the big green ones?
Right.
Ones on the green wheels. And then in reality is, it's gonna make it easier on the hauler as well. He's not gonna have drums sitting out there.
The points got blue, baby.
It can be, it can be.
A lot of the people I talked to didn't want the big green ones. Said it's too much trouble. They just.
Well, you don't have to add a big one or just a small one. The one you buy at Walmart is bigger than the small one.
I've never seen a small one.
Yeah, they have small and big. But at any rate, it's just something we need to, you know, once again, they're paying the same freight that everyone else is. And they should, they deserve the same, same product.
Yep.
So we, this motion's, we have no motion yet on this.
Do we not?
We do not.
I make a motion to approve option number one attached to ordinance.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Turner, second by Commissioner Harris. Is there any further discussion on the board?
Yes, sir. I would, I would like to know, as, you know, make sure you feel good about that qualifies as bulk waste, the size of the TVs and all that stuff. I mean, the question I have is fifty-five inch TV now gonna be able to put out on the side of the thing. They're gonna pick it up and it's gonna go away with. You're saying that it does?
Well, no, I'm saying large is still bulk. Now, I understand large is undefined, and that's.
Bulk's undefined as well.
No, bulk solid waste is defined.
Okay.
And that's, that's where the, it appears. Like mattresses, refrigerators, et cetera, are bulk solid waste, and that's a special pickup.
So a mattress on the side of your curb is a special pickup?
That's bulk, which is a special pickup. It's not the normal truck coming by and they gotta, they pay, right?
Send the claw truck to that.
You know, for the record, Shane Parker, county engineer, I had this conversation because it come up in Harlem. And I wanna say that they said they don't have a, I thought they had a special truck. It's a, I guess it's the same truck, but sofas, couches, same thing, mattresses, that should all be bulk. And they have, and they should be able to pick that up.
But not with the regular pickup, right?
No, that's exactly what he's saying.
Regular pickup. They said they didn't come around a second time for that.
All right, well, how about, we got some more. I didn't, I didn't realize that this was so.
I'm so glad your head hurts too, because mine does as well. And, and, and I'm, and by the way, Mark, I mean, I'm not, I'm not picking you apart here. I just, because, because if I ride around, I'm just thinking of two neighborhoods, Matthew Loop and I don't know what the other one is, but it's right by my office. And it's sunshine. There, this problem exists. And Shane, if they're, if they're not going in multiple vehicles and they're charging us an extra, that's, that's a foul, you know? Okay, good. So, but are they charging the constituent?
No. For the record, Shane Parker, again, no, they charge a certain, we pay them a certain rate.
Okay.
And it's just, they do it twice a week pickup and then a one week order.
All right. I think one thing that might help is if you just tell the waste hauler, tighten up, you know? Because there's a lot of stuff hanging out on the sides, so.
You can tell, you can tell them that when you tell the city about the roads.
Okay, I'm, I'm just, I'm looking at the.
When you're not sleeping. Just give me something else, sir.
The bulk solid wastes is, there's, our ordinance does provide later, there's no extra charge for that. It's just requires a phone call. According to our ordinance, it requires a phone call from the resident to the hauler to say, I've got this. Please come pick it up. That's, that's what our ordinance says now.
Yes, sir.
And I don't, and I don't know, Shane, is that, is that even happening? Or everybody just puts everything out and all goes, all goes away?
I would say it's the latter, but not all of it goes away from time to time. But you ask Shane.
North LaBelle, they put it out and they call me.
More than, it's probably the latter. They, if, they'll tag it and they'll say call, but they should pick it up. They shouldn't have to call, but they could call.
Yeah, they do.
I don't know. I just know if our guys see it sitting so long in front of the house, they should pick it up. Or if not, we call. Our commissioner calls and tells us there's a problem.
Yes.
But they do pick it up.
Yeah.
All right. If you want, just as I'm hearing all this, maybe we ought to sort of table this and incorporate it into the discussion of the.
I rescind my motion. I, I, I make a motion to table with.
To incorporate it into the bigger discussion of the carts and all that related.
Yes, sir, please. Yep. We thought it was just housekeeping, Mark.
All right.
Second. Will we get a second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Turner to table. Commissioner Byrd, second. Does anyone in the public still want to address this?
We got one lady.
Come on up, ma'am. Come up to the podium, please, ma'am.
That's our.
If you would, just, yes.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Monica Zanardi. I am a president of Pioneer. My question is, if you are going to decide on the trash cans, Pioneer, we are rural residential. So we don't have one trash can. Okay, in my case, I probably have maybe half one day and fifteen the next week because I clean up these tables. So what happens when you have those carts, which are thirty-five gallons, and you have twenty-five more boxes to throw away?
Well, as long as it's not too big, they're still gonna, they're still gonna discard of it the way they have been. What we're addressing here is to make sure they're not gonna have an issue if someone, say in your situation, if you had an oversized that you had already provided, we're gonna make sure they're not gonna come to you and say, you can no longer use this. And that would put a burden back on you. So we're trying to protect the homeowners is what this is all about.
Have you had that problem?
The problem we had is that we had to put the containers in a box because the county, when they come to cut the grass on the side of the road, they cut over the trash cans. So I have been, yeah, I have picked up recycling from the middle of the road at eleven P M. to be able to access my house.
Do they cut at a certain time, Shane?
They cut Pioneer six times a year, so very ironic that that happens.
You can keep it.
We know who's going.
For the record. We cut more than six times. No, we cut during the day. I don't know about, you know, at night or not, but we cut during the day. And I didn't know we were tearing up any trash cans or knocking trash cans over. I'll have to speak to someone about that. But we got a route and it's more than six, I can assure you.
That's awesome. I wasn't saying that to be mean either. When I remember running the math years ago, it was, it was six times a year, so.
All right, it's more than that.
We hope that it don't happen again now that we brought it to his attention.
There's a couple people that would say we don't.
Be honest, since I don't live on a permanent basis, sometimes we leave the trash on, I don't know, Monday. And it, it is picked up on Friday, I believe it is, or the recycling bins. So it stays outside. So, but yeah, it was inconvenient when you have to pick up the trash from the road again. And so we did, what we put was containers outside. And we put the trash cans inside the container so they would not be thrown away by animals or.
But the initial question that you had was, you said sometimes you have one or two trash cans, and then sometimes you'll have fifteen. My, my, my question to you is, do all of your trash cans get dumped or not?
Yes.
They do?
Yeah.
Okay.
They picked up every single, if I, as long as they are enclosed or in bags or.
But if they're in a, if they're in a, if they're just in a drum, if they're in whatever on the side, it's not enclosed.
I use containers.
Okay.
So I don't know if I leave them.
Because it was odd at one point. I mean, it had to be like, you know, polka dotted on a day that ended with an R, you know, I mean, it was, and then we would pick it up. But we fixed that.
In my particular case, I use metal cans.
Yes, ma'am.
That they have handles to pick up. And sometimes I leave them outside altogether. Maybe even with trash, trash bags on top of it.
Yep. So the gist is it's all getting picked up.
And it does get picked up. So I don't have an issue with that.
All right.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mrs. Nardi.
Anyone else in the public wish to speak to this? Okay, so we're gonna table this until?
Right. Well, maybe at the same time as the discussion about the residential carts.
Okay, so we need to go ahead and have the vote then?
While you.
Motion to table.
Table it until then, and you do need to vote then, yeah.
Okay, so we had the motion by Commissioner Turner, second by Commissioner Harris. Any further discussion from the board or the audience? Seeing that all those in favor?
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Next, adoption of ordinance regulating vehicle towing rates in wrecker businesses.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve the attached ordinance.
Second.
One question.
I got a question too. Mark, okay, you con, did you contact all the towers or who?
The three that I'm aware of, Tim, Phil's, and Cloiston.
And they went over all the numbers?
Yes. I gave them all the numbers and got feedback from, and they're like discussing line by line.
Had an agreement with them, sort of a verbal agreement?
I submitted it to them and got their comments back.
And the comments was sort of.
Were incorporated. And then I sent them a revised one and said, here you go. This is the one I'm taking to the board. You got anything else? And I think Cloiston Towing had one cleanup that Commissioner Swindle conveyed to me, and I included that. So I believe I've incorporated all of their comments.
Okay.
Let me ask one question. Is that good enough, Commissioner Harris?
No, thank you, it's good.
Okay. On the, can you, can you go to the miscellaneous fees and tell me what that means exactly? Actual time works to apple hour rate with a quarter hour minimum.
I guess that.
Is that associated with an invoice that's coming to the county?
No, that doesn't count a county at all. This is all privately paid. This is just saying that if they do any of this stuff, there's gonna be a quarter hour minimum that they spend. We're letting the, this is to inform the public that these are the rates that they can expect to pay.
Okay.
And, and so, you know, if they spend five minutes, they can still charge for a quarter hour, you know?
And the only, so the only thing I wanted to add was that I don't know if we want to push that of a minimum to, to point five? Because right now it'd be point two five, right? I didn't know if you'd want to do that to a half hour or three quarters. And the reason why I'm thinking, Mark, is just in protection of the waste haulers. You, you can't do anything in fifteen minutes if it's not happening right in front of your yard. You know what I mean?
This is a waste.
Well, yeah, he's talking about, he said waste haulers, but he meant tote.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean that, yeah.
And I think what this is to say if they're out on the job and they're cleaning up a site and it goes, and they're there for an hour, but they go to ten minutes after that hour.
Then it's, then it's a.
It's an hour fifteen minutes. They're not saying they're gonna get a call and charge you for ten minutes or fifteen minutes.
Okay, so that's what, that's what I was wondering. Is that what they're saying, Mark? Because I thought it was just a minimum bit, like, I mean, excuse me, a minimum number that you go out and, and you hook up and remove, remove a bumper, you're called because the, the person from wherever says that they need that. You, you literally get in your car, you go, and then the invoice that you give them is, is for an hour and a half. And they would, you know, I thought they would say, well, you just removed bumper, it's fifteen minutes, bud, that's what you get to charge me.
So then.
Not that anybody would ever see, you know? I mean, I don't know if anybody's gonna be looking that up, but.
Well, they, they include drive time in here for notice, yeah.
But who's gonna, who's, who's gonna check on what they're doing anyway? Nobody. There's no way to check them.
Whether they're in properly charging rates?
Yes, sir.
It'd be citizen complaint.
That's what I mean. That'd be the only one. And they'd have to be there watching it.
Well, no. I mean, the citizen could say, here's my bill that I got, and it, it does, it's in excess of the rates that we've approved. And then we would be in an enforcement situation with the wrecker company for.
Okay, well, then I'll tell you what.
That never happened.
You just kind of cleaned it up then for me, Mark, because what, what I heard Mark say was that the haul, the person hauling and or moving, you know, the toer, they're gonna, they're gonna be in charge of that. And it's all, it's all gonna be relative. So the, the checks and balances are in there. Okay.
Okay, so we got a motion by Commissioner Turner, second by Commissioner Harris. Is there any further discussion on the board for that?
And, and public comment on this?
Yes, sir, I'm getting there. You and Mr. Butler just rush me right along sometimes.
Why did they not do?
I'm just a little bit slower than y'all.
Why are you not allowed to charge for, for the first hour? What is the logic behind that?
Probably because there's a base fee already. There's a rate already.
Yeah, okay, we're not talking about the special services. We're talking about the towing itself, which is the top half of the fee sheet.
Okay.
That's, they're getting paid to drive there and show up and hook up a car. That's what this is all about.
So it's gonna be there.
So they're, they're getting. They're getting something already for driving there, and it's assumed that they're going there to tow. I mean, and so it's only when it's longer that the hour meter starts running.
Longer than the one twenty-five.
Longer than the one hour.
And we love, you know, going a little further with that, it's an hourly rate of seventy-five dollars an hour. So what they're saying is they're gonna charge you a minimum, a quarter of that seventy-five dollars per hour to remove a driveshaft. Or a minimum, a minimum of a quarter, fifteen minutes to pull an axle. And then if it goes over that, then you'll, you'll see the rate. But just to do that for you, they're gonna charge you a minimum rate of that to do it. It's not gonna be, I'm gonna come out for a hundred and twenty-five dollars, whatever I gotta do to your vehicle. If I have to come out, if I have to, if I have to move the bumper, if I have to take the driveshaft off, it's gonna be an extra charge, a quarter minimum hour charge is what I'm believing this is, is actually what it's putting into the play is.
All right. So, so you're telling me, you leave your, you leave your wrecker shop in Pioneer that doesn't exist today, and you drive to the Palm East County Line, and that takes you, that takes you forty-five minutes to get there. Are you allowed to charge for one hour? Are you allowed to give them an invoice for a hundred and twenty-five dollars?
At the base rate. That's their base rate.
That's the base rate. Bam. Okay. It ends up taking me forty-seven minutes, what I, what I do. I still get to charge you an hour of one, of a hundred and twenty-five dollars, right? Okay. Anything else that I do in there, that adds that, that point one five, point two five, I mean. Okay, okay. I just.
Well, and I, and I will say that to add to your comfort level, Commissioner Turner, I know that Cecil, which is in Cecil Holcomb, which is Cloiston Towing in your district, he vetted this very thoroughly and was very pleased with it.
Okay, good.
And, and I will, Mr. Commissioner, I mean, Attorney Lapp really worked well and, and made some changes and accommodations and vetted it against other counties to make sure that with, you know, like, like kind rural districts and even some of the larger ones, that we're very competitive now.
Okay.
Where we are.
All right, good.
I think the hourly, I think the hourly meter doesn't start running till they're on the scene. The mileage meter is, they get paid mileage.
They leave the house.
That's mileage. And it's, and if it's less than a certain number of miles, if it's less, if it's less than ten miles, there's no. if it's less than 10 miles, there's no, so the drive time, less than 10 miles, there's no compensation. Compensation starts at the scene. Drive time, drive mileage in excess of 10 miles gets a per mile charge that they can be accruing. But again, the hour that's included within the base rate is at the scene, and then when it gets over an hour at the scene, or gets into these extra involved services, then they can start charging more than the base rate.
Commissioner Swindle, you put my mind at ease a lot. I don't know if y'all remember the catalyst for this discussion, but, you know, I helped a lady on the side of 27, and she was waiting for somebody to come from Naples or north of Lake Placid.
Oh, man.
And it was raining, and then it was dark, and I just thought, man, what if that was my person out there? I'd be worried to death. So then you said, we haven't even really enacted a policy, so I'm glad that we're following through on it. I'm glad that you've talked to all of them and they feel good about it. Do we have a motion?
Yeah.
We know, yeah, actually, we're up to the public, anyone in the public like to address this? Nobody? All right, we have a motion, and we're already taking care of that, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The next to public hearing is gonna be the adoption of a golf cart operation ordinance. There's Ms. Byrd's.
So would you like me to review that, or are you all have any questions, or?
You have to with it?
I'm happy with that, disgusted with him already.
So we just need a motion?
I move option one. Second?
Motion by Commissioner Swindle, second by Commissioner Turner. Is there any further discussion on the board?
I would like to make a statement, I believe Commissioner Turner talked about it being in the county, but I think that every district is, have to break it down because of the, the speed limit, and they would have to go through that area to see what, what will work for the other part of the county. So, because I, the law says to speak, it cannot be over 25 miles per hour, so.
Okay, is there anyone in the public like to address this? Could you come up to the mic, please? Thank you. She would just state her name and.
Chris Jarvis. So a side-by-side wouldn't be considered as for like the use of a golf cart?
Um, on the, on the, to, to question, there's also a CC that's a rating of a CCs before it's considered an off-road vehicle, is that correct? Can somebody answer that? Can you answer that? I know that small engines, there were different types, depending on how many CCs the engine had, was what the threshold was on that. What we're actually looking at here is specifically golf carts, so that'd be a question that we're not addressing.
And we made that really clear, that it's only golf carts, and it specifies only golf carts. So anything else would be considered hazard on the road, so.
And, 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 Mr. Chair, Commissioner Byrd, you want to do this Harlem specific for right now?
Harlem specifically right now until, you know, we have to take it area by area.
It's a pilot program almost.
Because it's the speed limit, and it depends on what's safe. Because in Harlem, I believe they can't be on Georgia, part of 7th Street, Lewis Boulevard, so all of that would be in the Panthers showing where they cannot be at, so.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Jarvis now has a side-by-side for sale, in case anybody.
But, if you don't mind, though, this is something that I've been asking, Mr. Chair, and I normally wouldn't do this, but Mr. Jarvis, what are you driving at? What are you, what are you trying to get accomplished? Or what are, do you have a?
I was just asking, you know, because I don't have a golf cart.
Okay, yeah.
I was just saying, you know, does it have to be a golf cart? Or if you go a certain speed, does that, is that a fact? Like, if I keep it at 25 miles an hour, is that considered okay?
No, yeah.
No.
Did you find that?
Fifty CCs, it can't be less. It can't be less than 50 CCs.
It can't be less?
Correct.
Okay. I knew there was something in there that kind of triggered a.
It's like a true false question, I got confused. It can't be less than 50 CCs to be considered, what, what, what were we trying to accomplish?
He was asking about the side-by-sides.
So if it's, so if it's 49 CCs?
Or under.
Or under. It can't be considered a side-by-side? It can be considered a golf cart?
It can't be on the road.
Can't be on the road.
Roadworthy.
Can't be on the road.
Okay.
Has to be able to accelerate at a certain level.
Okay.
And that's why we specify golf cart. Can't be a side-by-side, can't be a four-wheeler, can't be any of those things.
But a golf cart that's 15 CCs in Harlem can be on the road, can be on the road, because we just gave it the green light to do that. Yes, ma'am.
Not on the sidewalk, they riding them on the sidewalk. We need to eliminate some things that's going on.
All right. Mr. Chair, did we already get on this?
We have, we haven't voted yet, we're still, we had the public discussion of themselves.
After this issue, I got one thing I want to bring up associated kind of with this.
Okay. Okay, anyone else for us to address this? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Yes, sir, Mr. Turner.
Um, so in, in, in one of my areas of District Five, Pioneer specifically, we've, I think that the county has cut down a tremendous amount of bad behavior associated with side-by-sides and four-wheelers and what I refer to as the weekend warriors coming up and destroying infrastructure that Henry County taxpayers pay for. One thing that I've proposed, and I've only talked about probably 20 people at this juncture right now, but I'd like for y'all to vet this a little bit, too, because this is getting into, I'm trying to get, I'm trying to get people to buy into wanting to register their vehicle, their side-by-side, their four-wheeler, whatever it is that they drive for recreation in the county. I'm, I'm contemplating, and I don't know how we would, I don't know how we would implement the instrument to do this, but they have to go into the clerk's office, they have to buy a $20 license that gives them a sticker that has the county emblem on it, and it's just like if you go to Big Cypress Swamp and you want to drive your airboat, you put that thing on your airboat. It's just like back in the day, FWC used to have, you've already done, FWC would give you the ability to call and or go to one of their facilities, or you could just flag somebody down and say, go through my boat and make sure everything's up to snuff, I have my fire extinguisher, I have my whistle, I'm a good, I'm a good actor, I want to have a sticker that associates me with that. Granted, they, they got away from that program because they said, man, we, I don't know why, there's, there's different theories of why they got away with it. But the, the problem, the problem that I'm trying to help eliminate is a deputy that rides up on someone in Pioneer, Montura, Hookers Point, Harlem, you name it, the blocks, they see a herd of side-by-sides, and that, and that's what we witness all the time, and, and they're gonna know those are Henry Countyans. And I know that a deputy is supposed to treat everybody the same, but the reality is, is that there's a, there's a difference about, in my opinion, and maybe I'm being discriminatory, well, it won't be the first time I've been told that I discriminate, but there's something to me about, you know, the Henry County folks using their facilities that they pay for on a daily basis, and people that are not from Henry County wreck and shop. And I think that, that it, it creates a different conversation for our deputies to be able to have another tool in their toolbox. Plus, if, if that thing is registered, you know, I think we're gonna also eliminate some of the bad, really bad behaviors that we probably could potentially have coming up from Miami Dade or Broward with regards to us being an area where chop shop occurs.
That'd be the tax collector's office.
Okay.
Are you, are you, it's strictly for identification reasons, right?
Strictly for identification to that.
If I don't have one, am I getting a ticket?
No, sir, you're not gonna get a ticket.
It's just ID only.
Yes, sir, you're not gonna get a ticket, Commissioner Swindle, but that deputy may now ask you a couple more questions and want to look at your ID, and, and, because you don't have it registered. And, and, and listen, this is, this is gonna be, oh my gosh, Carson's trying to get us for 20 bucks and he's hammering on us, and all this is really doing is I'm trying to create another tool, and maybe $20 is a horrible number, because that's way too much money. You know, maybe it's 10, I don't know, but I, I do want us to vet that a little bit and see how it's received. You know, you're, you're having the thing with the golf carts in Harlem. I can guarantee you right now, if, let me use somebody completely that we all know, Doc. If, if Doc wants to get on his side-by-side, and a deputy wants to pull him over while he's going down Panama, and then hops on Tampa and goes down to Henry Island, good luck giving them a ticket. I don't care if it's 35 CCs or 120 CCs, I'm gonna hear about that. And then Steve Win's gonna hear about it, too, and Doc is not destroying anything out there, you know? But, but there are other people that are going out there, and, and it's a completely different, you know, atmosphere, and, and I'm now starting to see in Pioneer, I'm starting to see people that are, they're barricading their, their dirt road, you know what I mean? They're, they're putting a pine tree down, they have debris piles and stuff, and the reason why they're doing it is they're trying to cut off main thoroughfares from people that are trespassing, you know, on a weekly or a weekend basis. And then there's, there's engineering feats of, of, I don't know, I mean, I, I just can't imagine turning your four-wheeler or whatever in such a circle that you burrow down to China, but you're seeing, I mean, it's amazing what they're doing, and, and we're having to fix all that, and we're spending a lot of money having to fix that, so that's it. It's just, just something for us to think about, I'm not asking for any action, I'm just putting it out there for, for us to, to have comments and be receptive to it, that's it. Thank you.
Any comments on it?
There, there is issues with that, I know, and it's, and it's, every area has its own different battles.
Yep.
That's just, it is a tough one. You know, four-wheelers, same situation, the fact is that the biggest part of the, the problem for the county are property owners. Someone comes on your property, they're riding a side-by-side, they're riding a four-wheeler, they get injured or, or worse. You're, you're done. I mean, your insurance is done. And, you know, the worst case scenario is if they lost their life, then, then that's a whole different animal by itself. So, and it's, we have parks for that, you know, and they've been using them a lot, but it's, it's a tough situation. You know, around swamp cabbage, a lot of people in LaBelle, they use the, you know, the side-by-sides and stuff, they run around the streets, and, you know, in the different festivals over here, I see the same thing, you know, sugar, and I see them down, Brown Sugar, I see the same thing, and there is special exceptions when that takes place. And I've had, you know, I've had deputies tell me, we gotta pick our battles. You know, sometimes chasing a four-wheeler down is just not worth it.
Yeah.
Or a side, you know, a side-by-side, it's just not worth his time to do that, because something else more extreme could be taking place, so it's, and it's, it's just, it's an ongoing, one of those ongoing battles that I believe that could be a long discussion. So, we're gonna move along. The, under correspondence for action, we have a request to participate in the county coalition as due paying members.
Do y'all, do y'all want any backgrounds, y'all read it and know what it's about?
Primarily, this was placed under action as an information piece so that you all know that we're, we're reaching out. I know Commissioner Turner has been chair of that commission for quite some time. This is an active advocacy approach, and if the board wanted to discuss it, I just wanted to call it out for your attention.
There will be none it every year?
No, sir, we stopped doing it in 2008, when the bottom fell out, we were, we were, I think we were, before that, they were paying 1,000, we cut it in half to 500, and we've gone however many years of not, I guess eight years of not paying it.
Ten years.
Ten years, and we, we are chewing into that money a little bit, and we would like to go ahead, and we hired the coalition, hired a technical expert to give us better advice on how we want to go about challenging some of our issues that are associated with the state of Florida, so.
Does all the counties participate?
Not all 16, but all nine show up to every meeting for the most part. I, I have not heard any of the nine say that they're not going to contribute, but I do think that not all of the 16 will contribute, because they're just, they're just now receiving it, and they're, we've told them to, to reshake that tree and ask again, but I think that, I think that a majority of the 16 will contribute, so, yes, sir.
You feel comfortable that this is a good investment of our taxpayer money?
Do, yes, sir, I do. I think it's a really good investment, because this allows us, Commissioner Swindle, to have a voice with, you know, essentially the Everglades Caucus, the highest of the high in DC. We've been very influential in shaping, I think, some of the conversations with regards to Tallahassee lawmakers. We, we get that audience often and frequent, which is a redundant statement, but we can pick up the phone and get in front of the right people if need be. And, you know, I mean, are y'all aware of what Congressman Mast has, has asked from the Corps of Engineers? So Congressman Brian Mast, I think it's Congressional District 18, I'm not sure, but it's essentially the Indian River Lagoon, Martin County, but he has asked for the Corps of Engineers to completely stop allowing water to run down the St. Lucie River. He wants to shut those locks down until the, the water in the lake can be tested to know if it's harmful and, and what its effects would be on, on humans. In my opinion, it's, it's a very short-sighted, you know, discussion, because it, first off, the lake's not toxic, it's not having a harmful effect on anybody, the district's already proven that via sending the water to Tallahassee. Secondly, it's, it's a life safety issue as it relates to us on the southern end of the lake, because every day that we don't send water east and west, and we're prevented from sending water south because the system is wet right now, we run the risk of adding more pressure on the Herbert Hoover Dyke, and that lake is rising very rapidly. So I think that we need to, unfortunately, send water to both of those saltwater estuarine systems and, and, and continue to lower that lake as much as we can. I, I should have brought the slide that would show you all the spike that we experienced last year during Hurricane Irma, but, you know, the lake is almost a, I think it's 18 inches, but it may be just 12 inches above schedule from where it was this time last year. And, you know, we've already had, we've already had Irma, and it just, not Irma, whatever, Alberto, we've already had Alberta, and it just takes a little, it just takes one little action like that, and the lake will be at 19 and a half, 20 feet, and I'm not exaggerating, because if you look at the schedule comparison to last year, where we were at 13 or 14, and then what it went to at 18 and a half, the spike is, is, it, it can occur at any given moment. So we gotta lower that thing, you know? Yeah. I want to say 14-1, Ms. Byrd, but I'm not real sure. I can look it up.
Would they keep on it, don't they?
Who's they?
The water management?
They do. They, they, they have a, a ton of energy that.
They gonna keep releasing it, is what I hear.
I hope so, yes, sir.
Do you need any motion from us to support this?
Is there a figure on there?
Yes, $1,000 for what it says.
If you think it's feasible.
Yes, sir, I do.
I make a motion to pay the dues.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Harris, second by Mr. Swindle. Any further discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Anybody have any questions under the correspondence under the FYI? We're gonna move to staff reports, the first one I see is Ms. Papinoff.
14.15 is the lake level right now, 14.15.
Thank you for the record, Janet Papinoff, Grants and Special Projects Coordinator. The first one I have before you is an EDA grant. It goes through the U.S. Department of Commerce Economic Development Administration, and it's for the feasibility study for the broadband, broadband grant. $80,000 is the ask to the EDA.
Make a motion to exercise option one.
Second on the motion?
Motion by Commissioner Turner, second by Commissioner Swindle. Is there any further discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you very much. The second one is the big ticket item, that's the forced main from Air Glaze to the city of Cloiston wastewater treatment plant, 10.4 miles of infrastructure plus the associated structures, and it's a total $11.2 million project. The EDA ask would be $8,960,000, and we are planning to match it with a CDBG disaster recovery grant that the DEO will have available most likely in August.
I make a motion to approve option one again, and authorize staff to move forward with this.
Motion by Mr. Turner, second by Mr. Byrd. Any further discussion?
Just to put that one, Janet, that you have a res, an accompanying resolution.
Yes, and I did hand it out to everyone.
So, so could you, could you, could you boil it down to in dollars and cents, and what you're saying, Ms. Papinoff, we're gonna apply for how much?
To the EDA, $8,960,000.
The Economic Development Administration?
Yes, and then the CDBG is the matching part of it, which is 20%.
There's a 20% match that Henry County has to come up with, the 8.99 or?
$2,240,000 would be the match, and it's allowed to have this, this state grant be the match.
So the CDBG funding is gonna come in the form of that match?
Yes.
So what, what you're essentially saying is that we're applying for eleven?
Point two.
Yeah. And, and we're hoping to have no money out of pocket?
Yes.
To achieve this?
Yes. I think I wrote in the, your, the write-up that there's a lot of improvements to this, to the wastewater treatment plant.
We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna have improvements in what you have in the write-up, if I understand it correctly, at the City of Clueston wastewater treatment plant proper, plus we're gonna put
Expand it.
line in the ground, excuse me, we're gonna expand out there, and we're gonna put line in the ground.
Yes.
And the expansion is gonna have unmet need already out the gate. I mean, we're good.
City of Clueston needs to do remediation work and some expansion anyway. But we would do it to increase the capacity to handle the eight miles out to Air Glaze.
And we're gonna add a resiliency component so that it's stronger for the next storm.
Very good time to ask them to take the roads back.
My man.
He didn't hear you.
Oh, he heard him.
He heard him.
Okay.
So then how long, how long's this gonna drag on?
Like, you, you, you can ask that differently so that I make sure I understand what he's saying. I'm asking you. Are we gonna know before we get this? Is that what you're saying? Yeah. What's the timeline on this? Because Commissioner Harris and I are tired of talking about forced main to Air Glades. We're tired of it, Ms. Papinoff.
When, the EDA is begging us to get this in, this grant in before July, mid-July, and they expect to have it by October one. You know, all, you know, all the money, all in the right pockets and everything, all are in the right places. And by then, we'll have applied for the CDBG grant. So we'll be, it's gonna be a, a two-step, yeah, it's gonna be some fancy dancing.
Is that Wild, Wiley Cat, Ms. Gatsin, she gonna help with that CDBG process or?
It's a CDBG disaster recovery economic development.
Better keep her out of there, man, she's tired of building a house.
We'll concentrate on housing with her.
Okay, so, so for all intents and purposes, you're telling us that by mid-October, you, you would, up or down, we're gonna know?
No, we should know. And then before we accept the grant, we should have confirmation that we got the other one. Now, if we don't get the other one for some reason.
If we don't get the other, if we don't.
Have to figure out something else.
If we don't get the eight point, excuse me.
Two point two.
The two point two four.
If we receive the DEO grant and we don't get the CDBG funding.
If we receive the EDA and we don't get the other one, then we have to come back to you to decide what we wanna do.
How confident are you in the grants?
Yeah, over and under. Odds in Vegas, what do you think? Come on, you talk a lot of smack, Ms. Papinoff, what are you thinking there, huh?
Well, the EDA is really, really anxious to help us with this project.
So that's a good sign.
That's a very good sign. The CDBG DR, which is disaster recovery, is a very flexible program. It's not as restrictive as like the housing program is, so it's, we've got a lot of leverage. And there're gonna be other projects that we'll be able to apply at the same time.
If I'm not mistaken, and please correct me, Ms. Papinoff, and this is all kind of a spin-off of what happened of post Hurricane Irma, long-term recovery, sustainability, resiliency, when the EDA came here at a roundtable and said, we are here, we want to help, how can we help you? And we, and we identified this as, as a resiliency project, or Ms. Papinoff.
Right, right.
We identified this as something that we need for not only long-term recovery, but to a growth model as well.
And they see that that corridor between Air Glades and the City of Clueston is prime for attracting new industry, businesses and commercial projects, and it's not only can, it's not dependent on the airport project, but it's just make it stronger.
There are some other options if we don't get.
Mr. Chair, you, you need to make that person identify herself, nobody knows who she is.
Of course, Shane's made fifteen trips, you can make one, that'll be all right.
We know Shane.
We don't know for sure, but there are some other potential options if for some reason we don't get the CDBG DR. We did talk to them with the City of Clueston with some of the improvements they're making now. Mr. Vade jotted everything down, and he is vetting that with his superiors to see if potentially we could use some of their matching dollars for that twenty percent match if something doesn't come through with the CDBG.
Ms. Davis, you say there, you mean the city's matching? Okay.
Yeah, but it would, because we're all playing together, it would, it would go towards our match as well.
Okay.
So that's why we need to do it together.
Okay.
Great work, Ms. Papinoff.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, y'all.
Can I vote in favor of it? We voted yet? I'd like to vote for it. Have we voted?
I don't think we have a motion yet, do we? We need a motion in a second.
Oh, we did. I move option one.
You did that.
Oh, was that follow-up stuff? Follow-up, I'll vote for it again anyway.
The vote didn't happen, I think the motion and second happened, but not the vote.
I don't think, I don't remember voting.
I don't think we had a vote either.
We didn't. I wanted clarification.
Okay.
Because, because the write-up's good, but I want us all to hear exactly what it is. I'm sure we're all on the same page, I feel very confident y'all read it. But I just, I want it, I want us to hear that that twenty percent is kind of a question mark. I want us to be able to sleep on, you know, if we, if we get the first portion, we really need, we need to find a way to possibly go out. That's one of those things that, to me, you contemplate how you're gonna finance the two point two four. And I don't wanna say that out loud too much because they may be listening to us, and I want them to find a way to get it to us. But this, this is kind of one of those rubber meets the road moments, and you know, we were, I don't know, you weren't and you weren't. But I believe you two were, was, was Commissioner Swindle on us when we had the first portion of, uh?
Back in fourteen?
With, uh?
DEP.
What was his name? Little John?
Yes.
We had it queued up.
Yep.
And, and, and.
Worked out.
And we just had, we had, we, we basically turned it down because there wasn't enough political will to spend about twenty-six thousand dollars a year. And, and that frustrates you because staff goes through all this effort and energy to do this. They bring it before us and kind of like they put a stake on a plate, we went eh, you know, so, yeah. So I'm excited about this.
This is gonna make us to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Let me clarify one more quick thing, if you don't mind, out of that same, and, and this is for the, good of the board and everyone involved. Out of that same roundtable where that was, where that was proposed by Mr. Vade and EDA, and then Mr. Bothello from the USDA, they, I'm in the final stages of a grant that I worked out with them as well through to redesign and remodel our entire welding facility for the adult school. And I'm in like the last stages, they've already kind of said, okay, but clarify this real quick, so I think that's gonna work out as well.
What's that, what's that, can, can you tell us what the dollar amount is?
Two hundred thousand.
All right, tough guy.
Is that for equipment?
Uh, re, upgrade some equipment, redesign shop for safety and fume ventilation that does not exist.
Y'all don't have a hood in there right now?
Nothing. Fans in the wall makes you gag. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Papinoff. Back to you, Mr. Parker.
For the record, Shane Parker, county engineer. This is the, an update on the Henry County Health Department. I received around noon the guaranteed maximum price for the remediation to the Henry County Health Department.
Tell us a number, man.
Four hundred and twelve thousand, seventy-five dollars and seventeen cent.
What's the timeframe?
They said they can do it ninety days substantial completion, thirty days to final completion. So a hundred and twenty days total contract time from the time notice to proceed is issued. There will have to be a couple of weeks in there for advertising for drywall and stuff like that, so they can get their vendors lined up. I would like to point out, they mentioned because we had inspected the walls, there's some walls that had to be removed due to mold. There's some, the ductwork needs to be cleaned, the dampeners are not functioning. There's like two hundred something grills that are rusting or chipped that should be replaced, that includes that. But grill supplies, return replacements, check and repair dampeners, duct installation repairs, they said some of it was torn.
So, so Shane, that's four hundred and twelve, four hundred, four hundred and thirteen K. Not to, not to exceed. And this is, this is the example of something that's directly reimbursed. We're gonna pay one percent?
We don't know.
Two percent.
Okay, where would the initial funding come from?
Insurance.
Hey, we'll cover all but.
But do, do we know if that price could go down?
It could, but, but, but Commissioner Harris, I think more than anything, right now, I mean, obviously it's a guaranteed maximum price. So yes, sir, it could go down. Unless they get in there.
And find something else.
But it looks like they've, they've poked a lot of holes and done a lot of things. We're already, what, six months, seven months past? What are we? No, we're nine months past.
Nine, yeah.
I mean, you know, the wheels of government, this is way better than the Henry County Suboffice, though. I mean, we ended up tearing that thing down like twelve years after the storm. So I guess kudos to us. What, what are, are we gonna have the potential to get reimbursed for rent as well? Okay. Okay. Well, then I'm gonna make a motion to approve the, the, the four hundred and thirteen thousand GMP with, is this with Chris Tell, correct?
It's with Chris Tell. To clarify with more, be, him to authorize staff to prepare a contract.
Prepare a contract, bring it back forth, let me ask you this, July twenty-fifth, July twenty-fifth, the July twenty-fourth, it'll be back contract?
Yeah, we don't even have a CM agreement with them yet, right?
Not.
You need to bring it back to us, or can we not approve it now and be done?
What do we, what do we need to, is this the one that we can prove such management risk?
We have a, um, there's a, we have a form CM agreement. And like last year, you, you, you approved a form CM agreement for the courthouse renovations with Chris Tell. Right. So you could direct that.
Want to use that mechanism is what you're saying?
You could say, use our form CM agreement.
All right, I make a, do you want that in the form of the motion, Mark? So I'd like to amend my motion to, uh, attach the GMP contract associated with the Henry County Health Department La Belle campus to implement the, the contract that we have on file with Chris Tell, the CM, CM at risk?
Well, it's a form contract, I'm just saying an example where we used to do it with the courthouse, but we're not you, we're not like amending that contract.
You're not amending it. You're gonna implement, you're gonna implement the language in that one on this one?
Yes, that's right.
I'll second that motion.
All right.
That's what see what price.
Four hundred and thirteen thousand.
Yeah.
And, and I want it ninety days substantial completion. From contract start time, when do you anticipate you're gonna issue a notice to proceed? Be a lot cooler if you did it yesterday, but I know that's impossible. I'm just aggravating.
We gotta have the contract. And then the one thing I didn't get in the weeds with that I was thinking about after getting off the phone with him is that they typically advertise in the paper for trades and to, to make sure we get the good prices because it's guaranteed maximum price. This is what they're holding, but the price is could come slightly under. They'll need to advertise, that might take like week and a half, two weeks. I don't know if there's a statute on how long they gotta advertise, Mark.
So, so Shane, there's no, there's no reason why they couldn't be coming back to us on August fourteenth, locking down their numbers, if I'm understanding everything that you're saying.
You're locking, you're locking this number in.
Guaranteed down.
Right.
But by August fourteenth, to, to Commissioner Harris's concerns, which he's right on, we're gonna have, they're gonna have already gone to the market.
Be under construction by then.
We don't, they don't need to come back to us, do they?
Well, that's what I'm trying to avoid, they don't come back.
I don't, I don't want them to come back, Commissioner Swindle, to get permission to, to move forward.
Yeah.
I wanted them to come back to, with him coming back and saying, we're seventeen days in the contract. They're anticipating that it's gonna come in at three eighty-five.
Yeah.
Guys, we don't, we don't get to go out there and look at it, and I don't think any of us should go out there and look at it. But by God, I wanna know what the update is on the thing, because let me tell you what happens if we don't. A hundred and twenty days from now, the Health Department's still at ninety percent substantial completion. Everybody's just rocking along, and Chris Tell's real happy. I don't think Chris Tell won't do that. I think they're a very reputable company, but it's our job to stay on top of that. We're, we're not here to build the building, but it's our job to hammer on them to get the building built yesterday. That's all I'm driving at. So, so do you think that that timeline's too compressed, Shane? If you could come back to us on August the fourteenth, that's the first meeting?
No, I can give you update August at that board meeting, but I mean, the contract's gonna be, if you approve it tonight, it's gonna be a hundred and twenty days from notice to proceed to final completion with ninety days for substantial. That's gonna be in the contract.
That's counting newspaper and everything, advertisement?
Yes, newspaper advertisement will be in there. I think the newspaper advertisement will be slightly over that notice to proceed.
Yeah, can we make a, can we make a bet?
But I mean, you're only talking like two weeks. I think there's, Mark, I think there's something in the statute about that or.
But every contractor and their dog is so busy right now, it's gonna be very difficult for Chris Tell, even if they're behaving as a CM, to get out there and hammer them on and get hard numbers back. So I hope, I hope I'm wrong, Shane.
And they've got vendors they typically use.
Okay.
I don't wanna name by name, but they got some that are tried and true that they do a lot of work with, but who will quote the work? Question would be, and I'm looking to JD, Jennifer, and Mark, is, do we need to make it subject to anybody's approval? Insurance, FEMA, I'm just asking.
Yeah, them just to allow for that possibility that insurance wants a tweak for some reason.
I, I don't like that. We, I mean, we pay a lot of money for, for that Cadillac program, they, they need to approve, we'll battle it out with them later. We gotta get this thing done.
I think the more, the more people you keep adding to this pot, the more it's gonna bog it down.
That's exactly right, because the moment you put that language in there, say, insurance, PRM, we need you to approve it, okay. Now you've got, it's gonna take seventy-two hours.
We have a contractor, they, they've worked for us before, it's not a new thing.
They've already told you they're gonna pay.
We'll go situation, so I don't think we need to add anything else to that other than go.
And I think because you do have a contract, you wouldn't have to go back.
Mark, I think you got the language in there to protect yourself anyway.
Well, we have staff that's gonna be looking at the project, they're gonna be during the project as well, so.
When you, when you sign that contract.
We don't have standard language that it's subject to any insurance company.
Yeah, but the insurance company has already, the insurance company has told everyone who will listen to them at any given time, you're gonna pay the, what is it? The, I don't remember what it is, two percent, because you're gonna pay that percentage, and that's it, congratulations. You're in our family, you've been with us since nineteen eighty-seven. Anybody not heard that? I've heard it every time we've talked to PRM.
We just have a process that we give them when something's large like this. If it's something small, we do it, we seek reimbursement, but something as large as this amount, we send it to them and we have them bless it. I'm not, I don't have any information that they've never not blessed something, but this is our largest hurricane claim.
For this hurricane?
For this hurricane, not to your point, not for previous hurricanes, but for this hurricane. So I already sent it, as soon as Shane sent it to me, I sent it to them immediately today. Hopefully, we'll hear something back tomorrow. They already gave us the green light for the rent, no issues there, we're good to go.
But, Ms. Davis, wouldn't you say, in the grand scheme of things, in their portfolio, and for the, the losses that were carried throughout the peninsula, four hundred and seventeen thousand dollars is a pennant's? And I, and I, I just, to Commissioner Wills's point, I just don't wanna put more language in there to ask them to have to bless something. I think that we should battle it out. I shouldn't say that. I think that we should have a conversation with them.
We can't, I mean, don't, under, under our insurance, we just don't, I don't know, I assume that we, we coordinate with them, and they just don't write checks to us for whatever amount we say. I mean, I think they, they wanna evaluate.
I hate to see us not follow process.
I don't, I don't.
And we don't get the money back, so I mean, I don't, do it the time and do it the way that, that they think it need to be done. Then they come back and bite you, and you, you have to pocket that money yourself.
I think the message is clear, we need to get it done as fast as possible, as securely as possible.
What about this, attorney lap, what about this? What about if we approve what we've, approve what we voted on? Predicated on by July, Shane doesn't stop anything. You guys are all green lights and everything's moving forward, but by July twenty-fourth, when we come back, you will have an answer for us as it relates to, the insurance company has said yes or no, they've given actual approval.
If they said no, you better stop.
If, 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 if they say no.
That's what I'm saying.
Then they've opened up a whole different.
I agree.
Element to this discussion.
Don't expose us for.
Jennifer shouldn't.
The thing that they're not, they're not gonna quibble with our contract language, they're gonna be concerned about the price.
Really? They're not gonna quibble with our contract language? You don't remember the, the sub-office off of El Paso? Because I remember it vividly, and they quibbled, they found every reason under the sky known to man why we couldn't go back into that building. They were part of the team that didn't wanna rebuild the building.
I'm talking about how much they're gonna cover. I'm talking about, I don't think they really care what our contract with Chris Tell says, other than the dollar amount. And, and so they may say, you know, they go, they have adjusters, and they go through and they look at the.
Yeah, they had adjusters, they had a team of adjusters that came to that building. I don't know why everybody doesn't remember this.
This has already been done, though.
It has?
The, the insurance companies, they've already walked through that building fifteen times, they should have an idea of what we got going on.
And we're doing nothing.
We're, we're double doing things.
They, they came in and they, they, they did an adjustment, but the price is less than four hundred.
Yeah, I think if I read the numbers right, it was like sixty-seven thousand dollars.
Yeah, yeah, PRM says we can get back in there for sixty-seven grand with magic coverage.
So, yeah, we go and sign a contract for four thirteen, and we give the bill to PRM, they're gonna say, we think this is a sixty-seven thousand dollar claim, and then we're in a big fight with them, and in the meantime, we're having to pay out of pocket. To avoid that, we could sit down with them, have CM, um, Chris Tell sit down with them and say, here's what you missed, here's what you missed, and they say, oh, good point, yeah.
No, they're not gonna do that, they're not gonna do that. What they're gonna do.
Well, you already, you're at a hundred and seven thousand dollars.
I'm having PTSD right now as it relates, and I don't mean any disrespect to veterans, but, but I, I, I am literally reliving the nightmare prior to even being elected of listening to why we couldn't go back into the sub-office.
They haven't said no.
No, 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 they haven't, they're just posturing with a sixty-seven thousand dollar number that they're pulling out of, out of what, a Coke can?
So it was an estimate, and then we gave them the actual, and, and we've done that with some other projects, and they said, okay.
I wanna add.
Yes, ma'am.
One thing that the insurance company did not have is that we hired, I don't know, was it ARM or who, just wanna go into like, uh, go in and check for mold.
They are, I see.
They went and checked, they went and checked, they didn't have any of that in there. They went and checked, and they just recommended you need to clean your AC system, you need to clean all the ductwork.
Don't have a sick building.
So you don't have a sick building, and they're gonna put Chris Tell's budget in having like air diffusers in there, scrubbers to clean the building as it's working to make sure when they leave, they don't hear any complaints about mold from setting.
Martin.
That wasn't in the insurance language. The second thing I just wanna put in there is dampeners, you're probably familiar with them. I don't know, I'm, but they're not working, I don't know if that's not covered, and then all the returns, they're all rusty, they're chipped, they're cracked. Well, if you're gonna do the repairs, you might as well do it while you're there so everything looks right. That would, you know, chip wasn't caused by the hurricane, I just wanna be clear about that, but.
No, but the, the moisture intrusion is gonna cause you rust.
Yes.
So that's, you know, that's part of it. The dampers have been setting that long, they're, they're electronic dampers, they, they freeze, they lock up. So, I mean, probably everyone I'm in there is not gonna operate properly.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Lap, are you, are you completely against, like, you're, you're just, it makes too many concerns to you from a legal standpoint for us to approve the GMP and get Chris Tell moving forward? You all move aggressively as you want, have your conversations, uh, staff level with PRM, and come back to us on the July twenty-fourth meeting, and, and that gives Chris Tell the ability to, to move forward? Do you think that's just too aggressive by us?
I'm just trying to think through if we, if we have a guaranteed maximum price of four thirteen, they don't, Chris Tell doesn't do work until they submit to us what they're gonna do and their quotes, it's all very open book, you know.
Yeah, we got, that's it, four thirteen, we just need a contract, guaranteed maximum price for four thirteen.
What I'm saying is this process, though, is they don't start going off, and we know it's gonna be four thirteen. Instead, they start getting pricing, and then they're submitting the pricing to us, and they say, well, the AC's gonna be this much, and we say, good, you got a good price on that, and, and we hear.
They're gonna, they're gonna, they're gonna advertise for contractors, and they're gonna submit back, and they're gonna say, this was, this guy was low, or this guy was low, and we don't wanna go with it because of X, Y, and Z.
They're gonna build a team.
Right, and, and so, along, a month from now, we may hear from them after they've done all their quoting, we're gonna hear that it's three hundred and seventy-five or something like that.
I, I don't think it, it'll go that low, but.
Okay, I'm just throwing out a number. It could be less than four hundred and thirteen.
I think you'll know the number within, I think they'll have, if they run the paper like they did last time for the courthouse, I think they might've ran two weeks, and then they had their, cause we had them do that before they came up with their GMP, so I think they can fine tune this within two weeks.
And, and, Mark, no, no, I know, I know what your point is, Mark. Your point is, they're not gonna start turning construction, they're not gonna start turning dirt or fixing the building, so to speak, in four weeks, most likely.
That, plus, my, my point is, is that we're signing a contract for not to exceed four hundred and thirteen, and it might turn out to be less than that.
Yes, sir.
Is my point.
Yes.
And so, when the board approves that it's a not to exceed, you know, you're accepting that it could be less, and of course, you're fine with that. And, and so, the insurance may, once we present it to them, they may have some points that C, our CM needs to consider, and then we say, oh, yeah, you can strip that out or not do that, and now it's not four hundred and thirteen. So I think the board can approve four hundred and thirteen as a cap. You're happy if it's less.
Yes, sir.
So we can sign a contract and proceed for up to four hundred and thirteen. If it's less, everybody's happy, and if it's four hundred and thirteen, well, that's what you approve tonight.
My interim, but, but the other question that I have, though, is in the interim, you all feel confident, it's irrelevant whether you feel confident or not. You all are going to engage in a conversation with our insurance carrier to say, hey, here's the number, it's gonna come back, but you're gonna give us feedback to saying, they're, they're on board at four thirteen, or a number that's lower, or no, guys, they're at two eighty, they're at two fifty, they're at one seventy.
Yeah, but you're, you're asking for a report on July twenty-fourth, or you're asking for?
I'm asking for a yes, public risk management has put on paper, they're on board with paying for this.
Oh, I know, we can report that to you, but are you asking for staff?
I just want a yes or no.
Yes or no, what?
Public, public, PRM is going to.
Okay, that's just a report.
Yeah.
Cause the action is tonight, as I'm understanding it.
Yes, sir.
You're approving a contract, and we're telling Cristel, go.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
So I make that in the form of a motion set, make a motion.
So if the insurance coming back at two eighty.
Yeah.
Okay, they have to prove the two eighty, don't they?
Well, they'll, they'll give us the reason why.
Yeah, so if, if they can do it at two eighty.
Don't open up that box, Commissioner Harris. Don't open up that box.
No.
If you're, if you're, if you're saying to PRM, we want you guys now to dictate to us which contractors you're gonna use at two eighty. If I'm Cristel, I'm suing the fool out of Hendry County, because we just engaged in a contract with them to, to engage the process of, of, of doing this work for us, and businesses make money or go out of business predicated on how much work they have on the books to conduct.
So they're, they're gonna have to match that with Cristel.
The only, the only risk that we have is.
Insurance saying no.
The insurance saying no, we can't fund all that. That's really the only risk.
And it may be a moot point.
And we got plenty of time before Cristel begins, and we will know that. Is that not correct?
I think so.
Okay, so we have time to say, whoa, Chris, even if we sign this, approve this tonight, we still can go back and say, hold up.
Yes, sir.
I have the money.
So I make a motion to approve guaranteed maximum price at four thirteen. Okay, good.
We already got a motion, and a second. A motion was made by you earlier in the second, by Commissioner Swindle.
Losing it.
So is there any further discussion on this topic?
It's going that Shane, no, he's not moving forward until everything came through with the insurance.
No, that's not true. That's, that's gonna be in the form of another motion. So I have a motion on the table.
Right, we have to vote on what's on the table.
For us to enter into a contract.
Question on that motion.
Okay.
So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed, that motion carries.
All right.
Now you can.
Mr. Chair, I don't know if this needs to be in a form of motion, but if you would like it, Mark, I will do it. But I would just like, you're saying a report, that's fine, but I would like to have feedback to the board from our insurance carrier on the next meeting, which I believe is the twenty-fourth of July.
It could be an email tomorrow, if you knew tomorrow.
Yeah, that'd be cool, too.
Just send us an email.
Just a heads up of whether, whether our insurance carrier is going to be in favor of this process moving forward, and, and if it meets the merit of what we have. Do you need that in the form of motion? Or you do not, right? Okay, good.
I think this is just simply a parallel path.
Awesome. All right.
This is a parallel.
Thank you, Mark, for making us advise that. I mean, it makes sense what you're saying. It makes complete sense.
So Mr. Parker, we're at the repairs to the east face of the administrative wing.
Okay. I don't remember if I emailed this out or not. I don't think I did, maybe I did, but.
You didn't shoot the numbers out.
It's, uh, two hundred, okay, my goodness. The east facade of the judicial and the administrative wings of the nonhistoric section of the courthouse complex have cracks. We've repaired some of those cracks when we were fixing the roof on the administrative wing, but we, we couldn't do them all, cause where do we stop? The cr, just cracks were just sporadic around. There is substantial cracking, um, bricks dropping out on the east face of the administrative wing, which would be right above the supervisor elections, all the way up to the third floor. Water is going in the cracks, it's going behind the windows. The windows are actually not attached to the structure. It's actually attached to the brick facade. So water's going behind, going in the property appraiser's office, going into the clerk of court's office, and then dribbling down into the supervisor election. Not yesterday, but last weekend, they had some, Alan called to tell me they had some water intrusion from the storm. And so I asked Cristel, hey, what would it cost just to do that one wall? I'm just gonna back up. To do the whole building was just under a million. To do that one wall is two hundred and, basically, two hundred and sixty-four thousand to do that.
The whole building, the whole facade on the whole building?
The whole facade, the mag, order of magnitude cost was nine hundred and eighty-one thousand.
Nine eighty-one K.
And that included doing, re, taking the windows out, putting them back in, putting, um, channel heading and tying them to the structure and.
Fixing it correctly.
Fixing it correctly, having to cut joints, and taking some brick off, putting some brick up, but now just to do the east side of the, where we had the worst problem, that's two hundred and, just basically, two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars.
Is that insurance, by any chance? Is that FEMA by any chance? Is that anything other than our pocket, but by any chance?
It's no hurricane damage calls. We were working on this prior to the hurricane.
So what, uh, what does County Minister Jennifer recommend?
And Mr. Chair. I'm not gonna put the budget officer and, and the, and the hairs of making this recommendation, so.
Well, you, can I ask?
Yes, sir.
Is this, is this part of our capital improvements list?
It is not.
It is not. This was not on our capital improvements list, or budget from our, okay.
No, um, th- this is a policy decision of the board. You can look at the two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars and just do this one facade, and then we'll be back to you in a few months and talking about the next chunk, and then the next chunk, and then you're paying more mobility fees, and you're ma, paying all of these other costs associated with re, re-engaging this contractor. I would really like for the board to discuss amongst yourselves and see what it would take for us to have the tolerance of doing a complete financing, get the whole job done, up to and including the parking lot resurfacing we've been talking about for a year, two years now, knock out this courthouse project, be finished with it. Then by that time, we should have a plan of the renovations of the jail. We could look at the potential of refinancing the same type of a, a debt structure and knock out that project as well. We do not have the cash to address this out of pocket. We're going to have to find another way.
May I ask a clarification question to Mr. Parker? And just kinda, in switching hats, I was talking to some of my colleagues on the old judicial side in the school board office.
Okay.
And they said that last week, which was the ending of all the torrential rains that we were having, that the roof was leaking. I understand Alan went and.
I understand there's, uh, I don't know if it's coming from the towers, could've come from the walls, but I know that Janet has a grant. Cristel's working on a guaranteed maximum price. It's gotta be done by the end of the year. Is that right, Janet, by the year? End of August or something, October, and that's to fix the clock tower, the clock, the chimneys and the parapets. And that may take care of some of the problems. I believe there's some storm water coming in from there.
Is that where you think it's leaking, or do you think the roof is bad?
No.
Roof is bad.
A lot of your water intrusion is coming from bricks where there's no mortar left.
And, and there's nothing we have talked about yet has addressed that roof that is bad. Is that correct?
I don't know the condition of the roof, but nothing we've talked about so far in any numbers addressed the historical courthouse.
That's right. And so we still got the historical courthouse roof that's bad, that is nowhere in these figures.
Is the school gonna pony up anything?
I doubt it. Well, I can't speak for the school, but I can give you my knee-jerk reaction.
Okay.
Well, once again, it's not, that is not entirely the roof. That water polymer is not, the whole roof
It bleeds to the walls.
is not entirely the roof. Uh, every one of your walls, if you, if you, you can walk up and look yourself, a lot of the mortar is gone. There is no mortar in the bricks anymore. It comes in through the bricks, comes in through the windows, so it's not entirely the roof over there. So we gotta understand, we're, we're not talking about putting a whole new roof on this. This is a ceramic tile roof, which means you can fix it in portions. It's not, it's not something you have to rip the whole thing off and start over. But your biggest problem is, on that building, is the, the exterior walls, water comes in all those walls. Once again, it was sealed, what, twenty years ago, the last time they had it sealed, I believe? The brick was sealed then, and now we're to the point where it's, the mortar's leaving, the bricks, some of the bricks are falling off, so there's, there's more issues than just the, than the roof.
Well, it, but, and I perfectly hear you and agree, and see what you're saying is right, but I would not even consider any repairs if we're not gonna consider the repairs of the whole building and facility.
So, Mr. Chair.
The roof's bad, why would we talk about doing part of it, not the roof over there, and have, you know, the contractors there? It needs to be done. If we've gotta borrow money, if we've gotta finance money, let's get the facility repaired and stable and where it's usable.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I wanna echo a little bit of what Commissioner Swindle said, the last portion of, I don't wanna, I don't wanna approve anything tonight as it relates to this particular request, be it the nine eighty-one or the two sixty-three, without knowing what our plans were last year with regards to capital improvement lists. I do remember a portion of the courthouse being in there, but I don't remember how, you know, legitimate, or, or I don't remember where those numbers were, where they were allocated, and I remember the parking lot being something that was discussed, I wanna say, in the, in the capital improvement list from last year. Okay, and there was a grant, there was a grant that was associated with that, so, so here's what I'm proposing, Commissioner Swindle, Commissioner Byrd. I would like for us to workshop this issue. I'm hearing that there's problems in our jail. I'm hearing there's problems in our courthouse that are not even on this list. That's a million dollars strong right now. I'm hearing that our, our parking lot has an issue, and I've, and I've heard that countless times. So what I'd like to do, we have, Cristel's already mobilized on site, right?
Cristel's working at the courthouse now.
I don't even know what the remaining aspects of the grant that they're working on finishing up are. So I, I'd love to see that. I'd love to step us through a chronological timeframe, so that we can all put it back in our, in our front burners and know where it's sitting. I'd like to hear from our constitutionals. You know, I wanna, you know, we have two of them at least here represented tonight, and I wanna know if Ms. Butler is frustrated because the windows are still leaking like a sieve on the, on the one level right there, or if the supervisor elections is having water come through when a storm's blowing hard out of the, you know, east to west. Those, those are all the questions that I have, and I haven't had the luxury of being able to ask those, so I'd like to put it all out there. And remember, two, a meeting or two ago, we all declared that we're, we're not wanting to build a new big giant campus elsewhere, and we're, and we're also wanting to get past the Band-Aid approach, so we all recognize, I think we're all on the same page of, we need to fix what we got, because what we have is going to sustain us for years to come. So I think it's time for us to, to vet that issue a little bit more, cause I'm not on the same page with all of y'all right now. And, and in no way, shape, or form of being aggressive with you all, but I mean, nine hundred and eighty-one to two hundred and sixty-three, and y'all, y'all chastised me last year. Y'all were mean. Y'all said, you gotta quit putting Band-Aids on jugular veins. But y'all are right. Y'all are right, and I think that this is getting dangerously close to us putting a, a Band-Aid on something else that's bleeding aggressively.
Why do you say you're not on the same page with us right now?
I, I wasn't, I wasn't, I, I don't know, I don't know what you're, I don't know what you're thinking about exactly. You just brought up the roof.
Oh, yeah.
That, that's a front burning issue. When it rains, it pours in your office. That's a serious problem.
I think I'm spot on the same page with you, that this needs to be fixed once and for all. We don't need to continue.
But I didn't know about that until you got here. I had never heard that, you know, so, and, and so I think, I think we need to talk about it.
And that's one thing we did talk about was prioritizing things, and this is one of the things, um, we need to get with Charles and Jennifer to see what it's gonna take to make sure, you know, that this happens. What about the jail?
That's a whole additional conversation.
And I think, and I think that's, and I think that, but that, that priority list needs to be established, in my opinion. And, and we, this isn't something that we oughta suffer through in, in one of our regularly scheduled BOCC meetings, and, and not give y'all any tools to go back and say, we, we kinda have some rough estimates of it's three million dollars for that whole campus over there.
Have we, have we already spent all of our capital funds for this financial year?
We have not, um, but we are doing some emergency repairs at the jail as we speak. And, um, some of the dollars that we were gonna do to the roof at the Health Department is going to be covered with this, so we have some additional dollars there, but it's not, it's not three hundred thousand dollars.
More like seventy-five, yeah.
So what, do we have a balance in the capital?
We have an unexpendited balance right now at around three hundred thousand dollars, um, but we, we have pending bills, um, that haven't come in from the jail yet, and so.
That could be lower.
It'll be, it's, it's less than that.
And what about, uh, how much we have in contingent fund?
It was fifty thousand.
Okay, so that's like.
So I would love to see, uh, I, I think Commissioner Turner's right, and I would love to see the whole package wrapped in together. And I would like, I, I personally would like to see it sooner rather than later. Um, and, and I, and I try my best to be respectful of staff's time, because I know y'all have got other things, and I don't wanna add to your plate for anything that I just wanna see happen, but I know we've already had some preliminary conversations about, okay, well, then how are we gonna fund this? Because, folks, as you well know, this conversation is, we don't have the money today to do this. And, and I don't wanna open up a whole nother can of worms, but the reason I wanna see it sooner rather than later, we've already talked about stuff like a cemetery fence, quarter of a million dollars minimum on a, on a fort to node cemetery. Um, it's little stuff like, you know, I say little, you know, the dues for the county, um, we don't know, we're not sure. We think we're covered on the Health Department. Now we're talking about a jail facility, a courthouse facade, roofs, parking lots.
Blink of an eye is two point five million dollars.
And cut taxes.
Yeah.
So I think we need to do this sooner rather than later, before we have to come to a consensus on, how are we gonna fund this? What's it gonna look like before we set tax rates?
Can, uh, can we use the one penny towards this project?
You, you could potentially use the one penny, but you've, you've got sixty percent propping up your general fund, and forty percent that's come up with a three hundred thousand dollar nut for the capital improvement, so there's not enough, there's not enough weight in that unless you're.
Should do the hundred percent?
No, sir. Not at this time.
Cause that, that's what it was, uh, intended to go for.
We're not, we're not gonna work this out tonight.
Ten years that I've been on the board, we've never used it for capital improvements.
We're, we're not gonna settle this tonight. We're not gonna work it out tonight, and I don't mind talking about it, but the point is, I think we need to ask staff to come back with, here are some options financially, um, here, here is what a good overall picture, overarching picture of what it looks like, and how far do you wanna go? Do you wanna add some of the jail things that need to be done now?
And, and Mr. Chairman, too, does this, does this help craft some of our legislative priority? Do we wanna go after another half a million, or do we wanna make that request at one point, too, as it relates to historic courthouse grants that probably haven't been funded in a couple of years, you know, but looking at all of those things.
Well, the problem, the, the problem is, it's a little more time sensitive than a grant.
No, sir. No, no, I'm, I'm not saying, I'm not, I didn't mean it like that.
Yeah.
Just, I'm just saying, of trying to put that as an option of how we could potentially pay for it eventually.
Right.
You know?
Right, right, right.
But, um, but Commissioner Swindle, I guess my question would be, what are you thinking on a timeframe? When do you wanna meet with it?
We, we're setting millage rate in Ju- July.
You're supposed to much, set the millage rate on July twenty-fourth.
Well, if the buildings are leaking, you know, you, you got, you just can't let them leak.
But the, the leaking on the historic side was a new report to me, and I think it was just the unique nature of the way the storm was blowing in. It may not happen the next time, but that's a big maybe. I, I cannot guarantee that it's not gonna leak, but it's something we need to address quickly.
What I'm hearing is, is that we can't wait to not have a meeting in July.
I think, I think.
I, I don't think you could.
We need to, we need to ask staff to give us the soonest possible timeframe, when they can wrap a complete synopsis of what are major capital improvements we have to do, and what are some options to make it happen.
It, it's always easier for us if we pencil in a date, subject to change, based on whatever information we can gather. Can we ask for a soft deadline, and then we poll you for availability if we need to move it? Could we do that instead? That way, that gives us a number, a, a date to work towards.
Next week?
Yeah.
Is next week too soon?
Is, uh.
End of next week, middle of next week?
I'm, I'm gonna look at. End of Friday, sir.
That's the start.
The twenty-second?
What are you talking about, a special meeting then? Is that, is that too soon for advertisement reasons?
Well, it needs to be a special meeting. I'm sorry. It, it needs to be a special meeting, because it, it's gonna require action.
I'm, I'm gonna be gone, is what I'm saying, for next week.
Charles, can you? What about that Monday? You'll be back on Monday, won't you, Charlie?
No, I won't.
Friday's gonna be the best. If we can do Friday, that'd be great.
The twenty-second?
Twenty-second or twenty-ninth, or the sooner the better, but we'll all be at FAC.
Twenty-ninth is at FAC.
Commissioner.
I'm sorry?
At, at the latest, July, Monday, July second is...
We're back, aren't we? We're back from FAC on the twenty-ninth.
No, sir, that'd be late that evening.
There's business meetings up until noon.
Better tighten up.
You'd have to do it on Monday.
It's got to work.
I mean, if you're going to wait that far out, that'll be Monday, July second.
That's, we need to do sooner than that, is that...
If I was here that week, I'll be gone to another country, I'm going to Georgia.
The week of the eighteenth? Yeah, that's a whole foreign, foreign country.
All right, so, so did y'all say the twenty-second does not work?
The twenty-second does work.
It does work.
Can you phone in?
Does not work.
Let's, 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 let's do that.
Okay, the twenty-second.
Let's make that our first soft date.
Commissioner Byrd, you're going to be traveling, is, do you have any kind of a mobile device that we might be able to share with you? Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll talk details later, because I want you to be able to get the materials and be able to participate that way.
So, anyway, Charles, you got, uh, uh, nine eighty-one, you know that number.
Yes, sir.
Okay, you don't know anything about the old courthouse.
Yes, sir, we don't.
We don't know anything about the jail, number wise.
But I bet that they have something working.
We, we can get a working number.
And then we know square footage, you know, we know, we know square footage.
You're just going to send, well, y'all are going to send somebody through the jail and do a priority list?
We, we have looked at retaining the surface, services of Joe Murak, who helped us out on our jail issues before. I think there was a couple of little things that we were trying to tighten up with that, to make sure it was underneath a certain threshold, so we didn't end up spending a ton of money for expert opinion. Uh, with that, though, we can get an idea of what's moving, we're, we're just going to have to move lickety-split. Now, that means that we're going to have to put a couple of things on hold for the next week or two to get to these emergency issues, and so I want to manage expectations with the board, so then, it's like spinning plates, we're going to have to let something wobble here for a little bit to get back to this.
They, they weren't going to do anything anyway, we didn't have a meeting on twenty-second.
Well, you know, just to tie this together, we've been talking about this for fifteen years, that I know of, because for fifteen years I've been telling you that these buildings are leaking, I've been telling you we'd have these problems. Last year I sat there and argued the point, I didn't want the money to go down because we had building problems.
Yeah, you were mean, you were mean about it.
I'm sorry, I was mean.
Yeah, I had to pray for you after that meeting.
Thank you, I need it. Uh, but the fact is, these, these aren't just popped up all of a sudden whoops.
Yeah.
I mean, this has been going on a while, so these are things that need to be addressed. So, the twenty-second, if we can't do it the twenty-second, we need to queue it up as soon as possible. Once again, the more water comes in, the more chance you have that we're going to have to call Jack Snyder back in, and he don't work for free.
No.
And mold remediation is not cheap, we really need to make sure that we get on it now.
And it's dangerous.
Exactly, so...
You can have somebody that just, you know, it, it gets sideways quick. The, uh, the, the number associated with the parking lot should be at somebody's fingertips, too.
Um, imagine engineering probably, um, they've done several studies on that, haven't they, Shane, Gary's looked at it several times and...
I think Steve Ford came up with a number, but it was an impressive issue last time, because we had so much repairs to the building, made no sense to pave it and damage the new alleys.
I remember, I remember you brought that up. Hundred fifty thousand, something like that.
Well, in the process of doing this, where I was going with the whole thing was, in the process of doing this, we also might as well, the day we're looking at that, discuss the situation of what we're going to do, who we're going to house in that facility, what needs to be done to that facility, so when we're done, it's done. It's not that we're, uh, a year later we're trying to figure out, okay, we're going to move this, going to move that. Let's go in there and put a turnkey on this thing, let's fix all the issues that need to be fixed, and let's, let's get this situated once and for all.
Did we, uh, Ms. Papel, did we not, uh, were, were we not asking for the grant monies to do the feasibility study, which would encompass exactly that, through some of the FEMA long-term recovery?
We haven't got through the feasibility study for the new jail yet, such as the courthouse complex.
Yeah, well, I thought we had one overall, I thought that we were trying to wrap some of the FEMA money...
Space study, so to speak?
Yeah, that's basically what it is, it, well, it's a space incorporated with quality, you know, or do you continue to put money into that facility? Because it's going to cost you more to do that than, you know, somebody besides us, because we don't want to get emotionally involved.
Yeah.
Let a professional that understands that make that decision for us and say, here's what it's going to be. But I thought we had, I thought we were wrapping one, were we not? We did not, oh, okay, okay.
I think we've been asking for years on the grant for the old courthouse, we just haven't landed any of them yet.
Last year we were twenty-three, break twenty-three, now it's twenty-sixty-seven or sixty-eight projects, and we only cut it six.
Yeah, right. And it's been, it's been quite a few years you've been after that, so we appreciate that, just stay out.
We used to, we used to get two or three hundred thousand, didn't we, on the old courthouse?
No, we got the windows project, we got a roof project.
Yeah.
Um, and then we got the foundation project.
They used to give, they used to give money every year.
Yeah, the windows were about nineteen years ago, they've been all new windows on the, on the facility.
Two hundred and fifty thousand.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, well, um, we got, we got that kind of a tentative thing, or yes, Mr. Parker?
Oh, I thought you were doing the exciting one, huh?
I was going to, I was going to just, if anybody had any more comments before we moved on, that's all.
So, thank you, good discussion.
If we go and ask for more on the old courthouse, and we go on, can we, if we go and do the work, when, can we do, use that grant money or whatever to pay the loan off?
No.
Can't do that.
It has to be capital improvements, but you could, you could start working on the interior damage that this water has caused.
That's not going to do any good until we stop them coming in, though.
That's right.
It's like replacing a ceiling tile, and it's wet again tomorrow, it's just nothing, so...
But they can use the grant for the interior.
Ma'am?
They can use the grant for the interior.
Well, you use it for the whole facility, we just can't get paid, reimbursed for work we do. Okay, Mr. Parker, you have a walk on you added there?
Yes, I handed it out, it's for LaBelle Airport, it's for a non-exclusive easement for the construction, operation, maintenance of overhead and underground electric utility facilities.
So, move.
Rep, you know?
Second.
And just to be clear on the motion, it's authorized the county administrator or his designee to execute the easement, and authorized after recorded, he's subject to county attorney approval and the put works director approval of the sketch and legal description.
Get it done, bud.
Chair.
Hey, we got a motion by Commissioner Harris, second by Commissioner Swindle.
Mr. Chair, before you carry that motion, uh, this is the type of day-in, day-out business that is, is just common sense. Would it, would it be the will of the board to potentially give this authority to the county administrator's office, so we're not putting these type of items before you?
For any legal reason, we should not?
No, I think we absolutely need to do that.
It should be, yes, it should be the will of the board.
What do you need to make that happen?
Just amend the motion to include that, that any, any easements of this type nature moving forward would be at the discretion of the county administration.
I move, I move that amendment.
Well, that won't, we butt on this, and then...
Well, you can do them at the same time.
Make, you can just make an amendment to your motion that you made, if you want to.
I just moved that amendment, and we had a second.
Okay.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing that all is in favor.
Aye.
Pos, motion carries.
Chairman, I had one more comment, I forgot to mention earlier, under the road project for South Francisco, I'd like to give a, a shout out to FDOT Eduardo Ponce, he came up with, we had a shortfall in the construction funding, and DOT came up with a hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollar shortfall. So, without them, we would have to scale that project back, and that's something I didn't want to do, or we would have to dip into our miscellaneous research.
That's the road project, you, the first one, yeah, I'm sorry, in fact.
No, no, I didn't mention it earlier, and I just wanted to make sure we clarify that we give DOT a shout out, because they really come to our aid, they did it on Flag Hole, they did it on this one, so...
What was the, not just aside question, what was the pickup for the hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollar difference?
When we did the, uh, coring of the roadway, we found out the asphalt was thicker, and we wanted to go ahead and mill out the thicker sections to help reduce the cracks, mill it out and repave back, and we had to do some, um, ADA ramps, so, just priced out, that's what it come out to be.
Okay.
So...
Thank you, Mr. Parker.
You're welcome.
Uh, Mr. Lapp?
Yes, you need to make your annual appointment of the homeowner to the value adjustment board.
Motion to approve the recommendation?
Second. Motion by Commissioner Turner. Second by Commissioner Harris. Yes, sir.
The recommendation was nonspecific, so, um, in the options, so you're appointing Marty Howell to the board.
Is there anyone else that's burning up to do it?
Yeah.
He said he had to do it.
Anyone else burning up to do it?
I'm not aware of any, but I've not solicited it.
Thank you, Mr. Howell.
Any further discussion? Seeing that all is in favor.
Aye.
Pos, motion carries.
Oh, boy, this is going to be a good, I think it's going to be a, a, an easy one.
Yes, sir, Mr. Lapp?
Okay, so, uh, we've been working on this, uh, and we had a pretty tight timeframe I put together here for putting this back out for bid. Consider whether that timeframe needs adjustment in light of other priorities, um, let's consider that. It's, it's the next board meeting, well, the next, what was going to be the next board meeting, July twenty-fourth, for you to have, uh, results from an RFP that we would put out. I skipped over the details, but you've got a memo here that explains everything, so, um...
It was a great write-up.
Okay, so, um, one conversation I had today before you even had these other emergency items that have come up, um, in talking with Kelly Onan, who's done a lot of work on this debris management, debris removal issue, was we were thinking, we ought to have a pre-bid meeting, I didn't have that on the schedule. And, um, you know, adding that in, we should, we should add that in, we think, and then that will extend this timeframe, I'm not talking about extending it months, but maybe a month. Um, so, that would be an adjustment from what you see written here, is to consider having an extended timeframe to allow for the pre-bid meeting and other staff priorities, I mean, Shane's going to be planning, working on courthouse issues.
Can I clarify, and again, just kind of ask a retro question, maybe the, and not, not trying to cause a bunch of debate, but again, I, I, I think I still gravitate to what Commissioner Turner said over the last couple of meetings, and the fact that this still accommodates a contractor of some type, correct?
I'm sorry, what do you mean?
This, the, 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 the way that you have this prepared is basically saying, we still need a contractor to handle the, the overall process for us, they have to hire the debris monitors and...
We do that, no, we do that separately.
Right, but, but we still have, this still accommodates a contractor, a single contractor.
Well, not as proposed by me, it would be, or, i- i- it's multiple zones, it's multiple tasks. I mean, it could be a single one who bids on every single one, and we pick as the best firm, but it might not be, it's like, um, what do we have?
For the different areas, right, for the one, two, three, four, five.
We've got four geographic zones, plus four additional subject area, so we got potentially eight different, potentially eight different vendors, but...
It just seems like it may, I, I don't mind, actually, I like different vendors, and what I would love to see happen, and please help me understand why this is not a good option. Why do we need a said contractor at all? Why can we not establish our prices for what we're going to pay for debris removal from four geographical zones, for debris management on the site operation, for leaner and hanger removal, and what we're going to pay for stunt removal, and what we're going to pay for cleaning waterways, and allow Mr. Parker to hire, utilize current staff, hire additional staff for that timeframe, allow the time, uh, allow these folks nondiscriminatory, non, because we can't use preferential treatments, let them come now, starting, and register with us as, as a vendor that would do this for us on a subcontract basis, and we do it ourself, and not pay a contractor to absorb a lot of money between what our residents are earning and what we're paying out.
Would this have to line up with FEMA?
Well, and, and, and indirectly, because they're going to reimburse us, but it will, why will it not? Commissioner Turner, I knew this would get your dander.
I, I, Mr. Turner, I think what you're saying is very close to what Mark has here, if we allow the market to drive the discussion. So, in the RFP proposals that we receive, you'll be able to choose that. You may have, let's use real names, you may have for zone, uh, City of Closton or the unincorporated Eastern County, you may have, um, in a sealed bid process or in a sealed proposal, correct, Mark? That's what this would be, this would be a proposal that you all would be able to assess, our county staff would be able to assess. You will have a number from Catala, Rayburn, Regdell, and X, Y, and Z companies, so there's six people are going to bid. You may have two that only want to throw a number at it, and then, and then ultimately, we may have to go back to the drawing board, because the numbers are so out of whack, or we reserve the right, Mark, am, am I correct? To go in and say, you've submitted ten dollars, we'd like to talk to you about going at seven. Is that, is that legal to do, Mark? Or are you opening up a bad situation?
Invitation to negotiate or something like that?
Yes.
That's making Mark wrinkle up, Mark really frowned on that one.
Because, Mark, let's just say, let's just say that the numbers all come in and they're, be- because right now, today, comparatively speaking to how busy was everyone was after Irma, I can guarantee you the cost of, of, of operation has risen, because diesel is at four dollars a gallon, and everybody and their dog is busy. So, so, so they're not as, there's not as likely to be as many contractors out there that are looking for work that are hungry as they were last time.
Well, and I think that's more reason for us to take the middleman out of the picture, manage it with our staff, pay more to the subcontractors on the agreed price, and if you want to do debris pickup for us in these areas, here's the price we're paying, get registered with our people ahead of time, start now. When, when said storm happens, well, we've got nine folks in that zone or in the county, get after it.
And, and, and I think you're, I think we're basically saying the same thing, I would just say, instead of us putting a price down, Commissioner Swindle, and locking ourselves into that, see what the market drives, and then, and then have the ability to go back in and talk. Because I haven't heard our attorney, who always likes to say no, I haven't heard him say, no, you can't necessarily go and, and have that negotiation discussion.
I was flummoxed by it, I didn't say anything, because I was so taken, taken aback by it.
That's what I do, Mark.
Um, when you bid, you bid, I mean, there's a price, and so if you're, if you're, you, you, it's not an opportunity to just cherry pick one vendor and say, okay, I want to work lower with you, and then you don't give everybody else the opportunity, I...
No, sir, I don't disagree with you, but what I'm saying is, is that if they're all exorbitant, like, like, if we, you know, Mark, if, if we wanted to do the, um, if we wanted to do the, the health department on a hard bid process, and, and all the numbers came back and it was a million five, we would, we would not do that, we, we...
Reject all bids and re-bid.
We would reject all bids and, and, and start over again. But if they were, if they were all a million five, and somebody's sitting out there at seven hundred, I believe that in your language, you have the ability to go and talk to said vendor and say, we, we would like to open up negotiations with you to be able to enter into a contract potentially with you as this. So essentially, you're awarding them for coming at it with the best number.
I, I know that we have the right, like, for a construction project that has specs, and you have a, a, a budget for it, and you get bids, and it comes in over budget, that you can, you can then pick the low bidder and redo your scope of work to make it fall within the budget.
Yes, sir.
That's allowed, but that's, that doesn't fit here, this is, this is not a budgeted, you know, this is just a miscellaneous pickup all the debris that's out there.
Well, well, then, 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 kind of, then, in order to get to where two commissioners are speaking from the same tune or sheet of music, I would say to, this is very close, Mark, and I a hundred percent understand what you're saying, you're saying cutting out a vendor, um...
He's talking about cutting out, uh, going straight to the subs.
And, and I think that, I think that's your goal...
I don't understand that comment, but we're not picking a contractor...
Yeah, you're not picking an ash brit.
We're not picking us, we're picking somebody to handle debris, and they can do it however they see fit, with their own forces or through subcontractor forces.
Anyway, they want to do it.
However they want to do it.
However they want to do it, and they're going to do it for a price, and their price is going to be X, and that's all we're going to give them.
And then they're going to turn around and sub it out.
And, and so what?
May, maybe, maybe not, maybe, maybe not.
But Commissioner Swindle, you, you can't mad at the businessman for, for, for working his angle.
No, I'm, I'm trying to mac, I'm trying to maximize return to Catala and to WW.
And I think that they're going to be all over, they were never, they were never given the opportunity to do this. We're now giving them the opportunity to do that.
These locals are...
Yes, ma'am.
You're not going to get one guy, though.
You could, you could get one local that would handle all of it, I think that you could.
Then it's still a local.
You could get two locals at T-Bow.
Local, local is not in the equation of the evaluation.
We can't use anything, we can't use words.
There could be regional, there could be state, there could be others.
This is a mu, I'm telling you, this is a much closer tool. I think Mark has completely heard what we're driving at, let me add one other thing. And it's really going to throw it away, why do we want to take on the burden of the City of Closton and the City of LaBelle? I thought that we did that last year.
Well, that's what I was going to bring up.
Out of the, out of, out of the fact that we had a mechanism that was in place.
And we should let them take care of their own.
And, and I think that, you know, the only way I'm even willing to entertain this...
That's, it's fine with us.
I can assure you, Mark, Charles, with that.
Are you saying you have any objection?
No, none so ever.
But listen, what I'm, what I'm driving at here is, I'm, I just think that, I think that last year we did it. I was the biggest captain of the cheerleading club, saying, it's all Henry County, let's get it done. But did you realize, we had other people that were starting to come into that, hey, we're part of Henry County, too, we were, we get you. So now I'm saying that we're, we're being proactive on this, you know? I hated that original contract that we had with Coward Gulf and/or Ash Brit or anything, those are big multinational, we're past that now. I think that we should be looking at Eastern Unincorporated and Western Unincorporated, and let the chips fall where they may on the other stuff. Tell me why that's a bad idea.
No, that's what I wanted to start with.
And the only reason I would be, be receptive to doing the others, the municipalities, is if they wanted to front load that check, if they wanted to say, we're, when, when it's time for said contractor to get paid, we're going to use your contract, We're gonna use your contract, but we're gonna, we're going to front that check because, uh, how much money do we have in that disaster relief fund right now? About twelve dollars?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, see?
Well, the thing is, on, on the other side of that, and I know everybody's, you know, says, let's, let's take them out, but the fact is, we're trying to get them to come together with us now. And excluding them, and I agree with you, maybe we need to get them on the front end, but I don't think we need to exclude them at this point.
Okay.
Cause the fact is, we're trying to get them to come together, let's go to Tallahassee and make unified ass, make unified, you know, let's go there and make unified pushes for the county in general.
Well, then can we at least, if, if, if there's, if there is a consensus to do that, can we at least make it to where? They have to front the money and it's not the county having to front the money?
Yeah, and I agree with that.
And on the reimbursement process, they can, they can handle their reimbursement process. But if, if you're, if you're cleaning up in that zone, if they wanna use our contract and they're cleaning up in the city of Cloiston zone? And that, that check runs to a hundred and fifty thousand or a million and a half? City of Cloiston is funding that out of whatever fund they have, it's not us.
Could we also include with that the Port LaBelle, CDD, and what, as well as central county?
We pretty much prior board vote was to, that we were going to include them and cover it under solid waste.
But, but what I'm saying is, what I'm saying is today being proactive, Mark, I'm wanting to once again carve that out, is that know what?
I don't know that you wanna carve out.
But, but again, I'm talking about those jurisdictions that are not our right of way.
They made it known that those were not-
But we're responsible for solid waste within-
Yep, to Port LaBelle, we have county roads that we actually pay for now.
Okay. So they are taxed for our solid waste, they're taxed, I think we keep them in there then.
Okay, clarification.
Okay, this is, I'm, I'm glad we're having this conversation this way, and let me tell you what, my, Commissioner Swindle, to your point? Our contractors are gonna make more money, regardless of even they drive the numbers down, they're gonna make more money locally, locally, we're gonna spend more money. And we're gonna get it done quicker, they're gonna, they are gonna mobilize prior to the storm landing.
And, 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 and we need to make sure that, uh, we are having this conversation, we at least need to let the municipalities know we're having the conversation? So they can then also be proactive? Or we can have the authority to say, because as we had last time, they were jumping up and down and everybody in southeastern United States had to come to Cloiston, you know, just as things, or, to get this done real fast.
So, Mr. Chair?
And they let them know.
Did, have you reached out to both the municipalities and have you had a response?
We, we did, but it was under the guise of, do you want to be included in this RFP? One, or are you gonna do your own thing? The other option was, do you wanna continue with the interlocal agreement relationship? Both cities said, we are happy with the interlocal agreement relationship.
Sure they are.
I would be too.
Sure they are.
They do. Okay, well, I, I, so I say, Mark, here's what I'd like to do, Mark. I think if we opened it up to August twenty fourth, this is the fact that you've done this, I am so tickled. Because, because we're getting close to it. So I would say, I open up that back date to August twenty fourth. Commissioner Swindle, do you feel comfortable now? Wait, 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 we don't have to do August twenty fourth, we can do August fourteenth. Open up the July twenty fourth bid results and ranking committee recommendations presented to the board till August fourteenth. And then what I would, what I would ask Commissioner Swindle is, are you comfortable with your concern? Because I think it will be met with the market driving the conversation? Or do you still wanna see set numbers in there? I think you're asking a lot for us to put ourselves in, we're gonna pay you five dollars a yard or seven twenty-five? Because, Commissioner Swindle, I would add to you, as someone that does a lot of bidding? I have to take in the, the volatility of the commodities into that. And, and, and we're out, we're, how busy am I?
Yeah, cause you don't know what's gonna happen a year down the road, two years down the road.
I would hope that this would be a year to year until we, until we work, because after this year? I hope this is a one-year contract, time certain. And then after this year, I hope we bid it again earlier, but we're ready to start in June one of twenty nineteen.
Given that we're in hurricane season, just, just to be a little bit sensitive to the timing of all of this? Can we make it to where that term allows us to transcend through hurricane season? That we're bidding this in, say, the January, February, March quarter? As opposed to doing in the middle of summer, just to make those adjustments? So that we're not under duress of trying to get said contractor under, under contract before we move forward? So if we could have that flexibility from the board to adjust the first term? By whatever length of time, so that we're in the bid process that January, February, March quarter?
I like it.
Okay.
So are we or are we? I'm sorry, are we or are we not including the city?
To, what's gonna happen is-
Shake with us?
Yes, ma'am, they're gonna, what's gonna happen right now is they're gonna go back, we've opened it up that time frame? Timeframe? I think that we've given our county administrator direction to go back to the cities and say, if this is what I heard? They're gonna go back to the cities and they're gonna say, we're keeping the zones and all that stuff? But you will, you will front the dollars and cents as it relates to your city municipality for cleanup.
And just to be clear on the-
Wanna tie on our contract, you can, if not, that's fine too, and we'll remove that from our-
We don't wanna pick and choose with them, like you said, if we're trying to come together?
Yeah.
We gonna put you in this and leave you out of that, you know, we, we have to make up our minds.
Yeah, but last time, they wanted the city picked up first.
Absolutely.
Well, front, front funding it is just, it's making it fair and equitable amongst the jurisdictions. We have to pay our invoice, they have to pay their invoice, just as if it was a separate transaction. If we did not incorporate them within this, they'd have to do their own RFP process. So we're just leveraging our collective buying power at this point, so it should, it should help with the economy of scale.
Lowering the price per unit, they better take the roads.
You're going to have to pay the bill initially to the vendors, because the vendor is our contractor.
No, sir, what, what, that's, that's the catch-all that I'm saying is that they would now, when, when they bid on that, if they wanna engage in our contract? They will now set a contract that will follow the same auspices, except at the top, it'll say city of Cloiston and the other one will say city of LaBelle.
That's piggybacking, and then that's-
It's three different contracts.
I don't know, I, I'll have to, I'll have to look at that, I, I just wanna make sure it's FEMA compliant, and I'm not sure that that is.
So, so FEMA, FEMA would have a, they, they would have the ability to come in and assess the city of LaBelle contract? There would be the city of Cloiston contract, there would be the Henry County contract. We just happen to be the mechanism that is putting it out on the streets, if we wanna invite their procurement specialists and all that stuff to come to those meetings and chat about it.
Maybe it'd be entirely a three-way procurement.
Yes, sir.
Well, the, Pasco County just recently did very, something very similar, so I think it was within the last two years. They may have a model that addresses that, but they did a collective county plus cities RFP and then separate contracts were done outside of it. So that might be something to look at.
Well, that's fine, we can do that, I, I'm just, I'm, the timeframe is still challenging. This, this was gonna be a, a push to get it out as originally proposed in, in the next two days.
And then with all, and then with all the other stuff, okay.
And, and so you, you put a lot on us here, and, and so-
Mark, Mark, okay, Mark, I'm sorry, look, when I, when I move that back, okay, Mark, you win. All right, so I said, I said August, I don't know if this calendar's right.
When, when could you do it, Mark?
And Mark's gonna tell you, December.
If it was gonna be reworked, I, I don't know, I need to look at it, and we gotta-
You ready, Mark?
Early July, I'd say.
No, 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 Mark, you ready? Bid results, bid results and ranking committees recommendations are presented to the board August twenty eighth. Okay, you're, I say you, do your procurement, is advertising the Cloiston news, push that out two weeks as well, Mark, so maybe that's July tenth?
Everything gets bumped two weeks, August twen-
That's, it's doable, it'll be tight, but it's doable for August twenty eighth, back to the board.
Okay. So if something was to take place prior to that, we'll use the old contract?
On the hurricane, we're using ash brit. By the way, I wanted to fire him last month.
We have a default.
Okay. And, uh, this goes out to everybody, it's not local.
It, it goes out to everyone, yes, sir.
Um, I, I am requesting that staff goes above and beyond what you've done, I hope you at least call all of the vendors? I don't know if y'all do that. But, but I wanna reiterate what you've heard this board say time and time again, we want to use local contractors. So call them up and say, hey, boys and girls, we're having a meeting this date, we need you to come and talk. And I, and I, and I do think this is one of the few times that I would, I would strongly recommend being flexible and maybe having to. I've seen, I've seen two rebid conferences before. This is gonna, this is gonna garner, this is going to garner favor with county staff and our contractor world. I think this is a great step in the right direction for all of us, and I hope that y'all will, y'all will take that up into consideration.
Got a few comments about everything you said, not to rain on your parade, but if you leave this, I hear what you're saying about the cities? But that contract has east side, west side, you have the cities, then we have the stump hauler, we have the leaner hangers? We're gonna subdivide it up with leaner hangers inside the city? Subdivide the stumps up inside the city, and then on top of that, we have one debris management contractor site? So they're getting paid just to run that site, so if they're picking up trash in the city? They gotta have a place to haul it to, and they're more than likely gonna haul it to our DMS site. So if you're gonna include the cities, and I think you're gonna find us with FEMA is, unless you have that agreement uniquely worded worth three-party? Have them do what you said, Commissioner, when we get our bill, we pay it, as soon as we pay it, we send them an invoice, they got so many days to pay us back? Because they're gonna be mulching that site, and then they're gonna have to just transport that debris from that DMS site to final disposal? That's a whole nother cost that's coming down the road, and when you, you got their stuff, so you can't just say it's the pickup, you've also got debris management site.
I, I, I think that the DMS is, the debris, I hate talking acronymese. I think the debris management sites should also be part of that, where they, each municipality and the county designate.
Got leaner hangers, stumps?
Yes, sir.
C and D? And then, um-
Did you just say three, three DMS sites?
Yes, sir.
Or, or at least three?
Yes, sir.
One for each jurisdiction?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. Cause, cause, cause the city of Cloiston has a handful of acres available over here, they dump everything anyway by the, uh, not on the transfer station, but close to it.
They'd have to be registered with DEP ahead of time, or it'd be emergency ones that'd have to be set up.
All of this stuff that you're telling me, I'm, I'm gonna use this in a hateful term, you're gonna take offense to it? But it's frivolous details that I don't need to concern myself with, make it happen. I think you can. You're gonna get it done, I, I have so much confidence in you. We are so much further along than having ash brit as our debris hauler, I'm so excited right now, I'm not even kidding a little bit.
All right, then the second comment was to your comment about contractors. Okay, busted it down, so it's smaller pieces for contractors to come in? But depending on how the, the, the storm hits? I don't know if any one local contractor has enough forces to do said job?
You go to number two on the list.
Stump removal, I mean, leaners and hangers, not a problem.
That's the genesis behind me saying, we don't need a contractor to do that, you need to-
A list-o contractor.
Twelve people in this county can pick up the debris, we're paying X amount, that's what was agreed upon.
And so, and so now, when, so, so you've agreed with con, you've agreed with Swindle contracting? And you've locked in a price at seven dollars a yard and they're doing that? And a category five smites us? And Swindle contracting comes to you after two weeks and says, I am overwhelmed? You're allowed to go to number two on the list, I'm pretty sure, and you can say, number two, would you like to do this for seven dollars a yard? They have the option to say yes or no, they say no, that's fine, you go to number three.
The pricing though, first of all, FEMA requires competitive, a competitive process.
It's a competitive process, if they wanna match the number, what you're paying is everybody.
A competitive process is a hard bid or an RFP, it's not-
They're gonna give us an RFP, Mark.
With a price or not?
They're, when you do a request for proposal, obviously it's gonna have a number in it.
Saying is throwing me off, when he's saying, we declare a price.
Okay, I didn't hear him say that.
We did this year, it's the same process as when the contractor did.
We didn't declare a price.
Ash Brit did, Ash Brit did.
Ash Brit did as part of an RFP.
They did that in the vacuum of, they already had the contract signed.
So that, so we can do the same thing without the RFP, but do it as Henry County, here's our prices.
But that's not a-
You're just mean, Mr. Swindle, why you so anti-contractor, man?
Well, how do you, how do you, how do you even come up with that price?
I'm a tree professional.
You are?
Well, no, but there are people who are.
But that's not, that's not a bid price then, when you've declared the price.
You could look at the prices they used last year, and we had subcontractors in this county that did it, they groaned about it, but they did-
But it was a bid price.
It was, it was, it was a great, and we were out of that loop, Commissioner Swindle. We, we, we were out of that, those were negotiations between a contractor and a sub.
That's what I'm saying, so, so we take the contractor out of the middle of the minutia? Say if y'all got paid four dollars, and that's ultimately, they were paying those guys like four and four twenty-five a yard to haul.
Yes, sir, they were.
So if we go to them and say, we're gonna pay you six dollars a yard to haul? They will jump for joy and kiss every one of us, that's not a bid.
That's not a bid.
We don't have to, why do we have to bid it?
I think it's, I think it's the federal process, Commissioner.
It's a part of the administrative code.
Okay.
So you gotta bid it.
But I like where you at, little bud. Go ahead, Mr. Aggressive, you're really tough tonight.
Just one additional comment to Commissioner Swindle? A lot of the contractors that were subs that were working were smaller timed subs that will not bid this because-
They don't, they're gonna do the paperwork.
You don't know if you're, um, a trucking firm, whether you're gonna be hauling dirt that week or not? You're not gonna lock yourself into a price.
I can guarantee you, they're gonna lock themselves in if they give that RFP.
In our case, we had fruit haulers who went after it because they had no work, they were already, they were already messed up before the storm, they were messed up during the storm, so they're like, hey, we're going to work.
Which is why I anticipate that you will have, I think that you will, we will get a proposal, a proposal or two back? That will lean towards us choosing one or two people to do the entire county, I think that that will happen. And then they'll just gear up, after the storm waxes, they'll gear up to be able to meet that need.
And then they'll hire people.
They will, yep. And it'll be locals hiring locals. I, this is a great step in the right direction, and I think that we're all learning a tremendous amount.
Sorry, Mark, I didn't mean to muck you up the water.
So what, what did we decide about Shane's point about DMSSs? So we're gonna, we're gonna, it's gonna be a three-way procurement and every city, the cities are separate and they're doing-
I think what I heard, and, and my direction has one more thing tagged on, which is, I need to go back to the cities, tell them that the contract? Uh, the interlocal agreement between us and, and them is gonna be, they front fund their portion of it, just like we pay our portion of it? And then they also need to designate a DMS and go through the process of getting that permitted.
Who pays the monitors?
It will be a three-way thing, they will pay a monitor, we will pay a monitor, and LaBelle will pay a monitor, whoever the debris comes from.
That'll be handled by the interlocal agreement as well by the-
What's collaborative, other than the, the bid doc, the bid document is one document, Henry County wide? But the contracts are three and all the services are three, separate?
The collaborative is, in my opinion, Mark, is that when you're bidding it, you're, you're, you're giving your proposal that will be viewed by three different entities? But they're gonna have, they're gonna have a price per unit, knowing that they're gonna get that, you know, they're gonna get that area, this area, and this area to throw, to throw numbers at.
But with the ivory, each city will be self-contained for all services.
Yes, sir.
Basically, just take responsibility off the county and put it back on the cities.
Not necessarily the responsibility, in my opinion, as much as the financial oneness of having to front the money.
To front the money. He just giving it back to me.
I, I think, I think this is, I think this is moving in the right direction.
Okay, let's try it.
That's encouraging.
Only thing I say, make sure we line up with FEMA, um, cause I know that-
We're trying to get paid, even if it's nine hundred days later.
We might want some things, but if it doesn't line up with FEMA, we don't give, so.
All right. The question is, do we need to table this, or?
No, sir.
Well, it sounds like you want, you need to direct us to proceed with the RFP, we're gonna be issuing it before the July twenty-fourth meeting.
Okay, just give directions.
We just need a motion to go forth then.
I make a motion to approve with the adjustments to the date? And the, the bid deadline, Mark, do you have a date of procurement?
Adjustments to all the dates, how about you, you, you just wanna see it come back to you on August twenty eighth?
Twenty-eight, yes, sir.
With these interim, interim dates will also-
Adjust accordingly, yes, sir.
Adjust accordingly, and that, it would also be, it would be like, um, the cities, the, the, the separation of services by jurisdiction.
Yes, sir. Yep. Make that the formal motion.
First, Michael, Mr. Turner, second, Michael, Mr. Swindle, any further discussion? And then all those in favor?
Aye.
Pose, motion carries.
Uh, make a motion to approve the ratifications of the extension of local emergency, unless you don't want us to do that?
Yeah, well, I, I have information to tell you about that, um, we, 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 we don't need to be doing this anymore. We, we don't need to be doing states of emergency anymore.
Beshin my motion.
We, we, we found from FEMA that you, you can't continue.
Why'd you want us to do it, Mark?
Change his mind.
You can't tell dogs this.
This, we got information finally, that, that you, you don't need, we don't need to be under state of emergency at the time of doing the corrective work?
Okay.
Which is what we thought.
Yes, sir.
So, we don't-
And we were told that by a herd of humans. Okay, so we're good, Mark?
Yeah.
All right.
Fine on that.
You got one more, Mr. Lep?
Yeah, partial release of county lien. Summary, or are you?
I need a summary, I don't understand it, and I don't wanna do it right now. So, so right now, I'm a no vote unless y'all can convince me otherwise.
What you don't understand?
I don't understand why we're wanting to give a release of lien for services that have potentially been rendered against a property? And or a property that that owner owns? And services have been rendered and have cost us money? I don't see how it's, I don't see how it's different. They, they, I'm gonna use this, they have done something and or acquired something that has made that property have a lien against it. And I think if we get into the, the world of, of, of forgiving liens? Then we open ourselves up to a case by case where we're, we're saying it's okay on one and different on the other, I wanna be consistent across the board. I had a constituent come in here, he read us a letter, he told us, he hired this, that, and the other? And, and, I, you know, I've, I've been saying this from day one? And I'm still, I'm still there where I, I'm, I just can't, I can't forgive it.
I'm gonna explain then, if I'm wrong, you correct me.
Yes, ma'am.
We're not forgiving the lien, let's say it's five liens and all of them's connected in one pot? But I bought the house on the first one, and I paid off all my liens on, on house A. But I cannot sell house A because there's liens on the other four. So we're not taking away the lien, they're still gonna pay everything due to that one piece of property.
But they have a bill that's owed to the county and they're not paying it.
Not the person that used to own them, but they're paying, we're not saying not to pay it, they're paying it. But they're not paying for five houses, we only purchased one house, they only purchased one.
But there is a, but there is, so, I'm not doing this to be disrespectful in any way, shape, I'm doing this because I need visual cues, I'm not the sharpest tack in the drawer. So, so I own this house over here, Ms. Bird, and I own this house and that house? And, and they, they have all lien, they all have multiple liens against them? And I clear up the liens on this house? And I move to, somebody comes and wants to buy this house? Today, the way it reads, I can't sell this house until I clear up all the liens on these properties as well, correct?
The original person don't own the house anymore.
No, no, I understand that, but I, but I have acquired, I mean, what you, so that even furthers my point. So then, so then the second house that has liens against it, somehow, someone acquires the second house? And they acquire the liens with that second home?
Right.
So, so we're saying we should forget, we should give this home the ability to forgive a lien?
No.
What are we saying?
All it's saying is that that person that got the second house, they have to, they have to clear up every lien that's on that house.
So we're not forgiving any liens?
We're, we're not forgiving any, it's just moving it from connection. It's a five-way connection, but once I pay off everything on this lien.
So, so once you pay this one off, it has nothing to do with this?
It has nothing to do with that. Those liens still stand, and that person have to still pay off those.
And what I would, what I would.
And if it's an individual, it's, it's, it's based on, uh, what I'm saying, uh, one, one property at a time.
Yes, ma'am, individual units.
Right, so that way, if somebody was to come back and try to manipulate the system, they won't be able to.
And, and I, and I read in there, where, you know, they, they did a little bit of investigative, and they found that there was nobody, so they had a, a set floor. But what I would say is that there, there have still been costs incurred to our county, which is already financially strapped, associated with that property, this property, and this property. And I am essentially, if you wanna say playing a game, or I'm, I'm working the system, I'm gonna clear up this property, and, and, and then I still have, I'm still a bad actor, so to speak, on these others, and I just think that, I think that we're encouraging bad behavior. But, but listen, I understand what your motivation, I think I have a little bit of understanding what your motivation is. You're just trying to get properties back on the rolls, and that sounds wonderful. But I, but I've, I've argued with Commissioner Harris so many times about that, that I, I just feel I have to be consistent in, in my, my vote on it. But I'm willing, like I said, I'm willing to be convinced and brought over to, to the other way. Mark, you had a mechanism in there for recovering some costs. There was something proposed.
Yeah, there was a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fee that we would charge the property owner of the candy jar, uh, for, for the, going through the process, so, yeah.
And only thing is that, that can't, I'm gonna use the candy jar. Now, the candy jar's paying taxes and putting back money into the county. And if somebody come along and buy that other piece of property, they have to clear everything else out of, and then they'll be paying taxes. But we so small to have five properties tied up, because it's not the owner. They're no longer, they no longer.
It's the person that they acquired the property from.
No, they, they bought it through the tax, um.
Then it's even way worse, because they should've did their due diligence and, and hired a, I don't, what, somebody tell me what that's called? Somebody tell me what it's called?
Uh, title.
Title insurance, title search. I've had to do that, and it's talked me out of acquiring some properties. I wanted to buy forty acres in Pioneer for five dollars on the courthouse steps. A guy from Miami bought it for five hundred dollars, and it was fifty-five thousand dollars in liens against it. I had to walk away, 'cause I didn't have fifty-five thousand dollars. I wish I had it now. I got fifty-five K today, baby. I'd have got forty acres in Pioneer. So, so the, the point I'm making, and, and once again, guys, tell me, tell me if y'all disagree, but I, I, I'll just, I'm gonna hush. Commissioner Byrd, I love you, but I cannot support this right now, and I know what you're doing. And by the way, I'm fired up what I saw on, uh, on some of the things, and, and just to soften it even a little bit more, I had three people bragging to me this week about how good Harlem looks, so, that's it. I'm out.
You wanna go back to the candy jar?
I do.
That's not right. And, and it's, and it's because it's a family that we're trying to make sure that lost their home during FEMA, bought a piece of property from somebody else that bought the property, that have nothing to do with the person that actually owned the home, because she's lost everything, so, and the money's coming back to the county, so I, I'm just gonna ask you to revisit it. I'm not saying that they not, they're paying everything that's due to the county, every lien, every tax. So they're not asking for forgiveness of anything.
Well, can she, can somebody make a motion, Mark?
And it'll be an individual, uh.
How many, how many, how many do we think were, is this fact? What's the, is there, do we have any numbers, or is it a large number in the county?
Yeah, by the way, I still wanna foreclose them stuff. We ain't done that yet either. But that's another conversation for another day.
I mean, it's, it's.
So, to be clear, there, there, there's a lot of people who own homes, who they bought them, however they bought them, cash, outright, whatever. But they can't sell them. They cleared everything up, but can't sell them because the, somehow it's connected to a lien somewhere else? 'Cause that's what we're talking about, right?
That's, that's what we're talking about.
There's a lot of people like that?
Let me ask another question, m- 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 Mr. Chair. Ms. Byrd, is this time sensitive?
Yes.
Okay.
And the reason why, because they're, they lost their home during FEMA, during the hurricane. So they, their mother actually sold her, their house, her house, but then she couldn't purchase the house.
Mr. Lep, is there any reason, why, why would we not, if, if the liens got cleared up on said property, why would we not allow that to be sold?
Well, we're not prohibiting it sales, but the, the, the title gets cleaned. Well, the title isn't, is clouded by these other liens.
Right.
And so the title company won't issue insurance without all the liens being paid. That's what we're thinking about. I propose the way you can release single properties.
Yeah.
So long as they've satisfied the liens that were incurred because of that property, but not because, but, but release them from the liens that were incurred on other properties. That's my proposal.
Do you understand that, Commissioner Turner? Is that?
I understand exactly what you're saying.
Is that, does that still give you heartburn?
It does, because, because I think that what we have is a, we have a situation in Henry County, in my opinion, where we have some landowners, property owners, whatever it may be, but they have an asset. They thumb their nose at the county, and they, they do not do the things that they need to do. And then, when, when they decide they're ready to cash in, and/or their children, or, uh, their cousin, or whoever, decides that they're ready to cash in, they go in, they come before us, they plead, I have puppies, I have a grandma, you know, I read the children, and I want you to forgive these liens, and we go, absolutely, and we do it.
This have nothing to do with the original landowner.
Yes, ma'am.
They, it's not that they're not paying it. They paying everything that's due to that particular property.
Yes, ma'am.
They're not asking for any forgiveness.
Yes, ma'am.
They gonna pay the county what's due to the county. Any money that was spent on that property, the county will get it back. So only, and like I'm gonna say it again, it's an individual base. You don't wanna do it on everything, because you wanna make sure the family's not tied into it. And this, this party, this person is not tied into it. The county, I believe the county owned the, the land, am I right? I think the county owned it at the time. I don't.
On which land?
The land at thirteen, uh.
No, no.
Twelve thirteen.
No, no, no.
She bought it through a tax.
Taxi, but not in a sheep and taxi. She got it from a, one of her sales at the courthouse steps.
Tell you, you got anything to say?
Yeah, I was gonna ask Ms. Butler, is there, what are we missing here?
Well, when we have a tax.
You need to get those who you are.
She has to get up and identify herself. Oh, Lord. Really? He must not be running for reelection, that's what I'm gonna say. Mark says it's illegal.
We have a tax detail. We have an owner and encumbrance report in the office. You're more than welcome to look at that owner and encumbrance report. It has the liens that's on that property.
And other properties, Ms. Butler?
Well, it, it's, person is like this, okay, get your candy jar back up.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. If you've got a code enforcement lien against the candy jar.
Yes, ma'am.
It's also a lien against your other two properties.
That's how this happened. It's against these two too.
It's against every one of three.
All three of them.
Okay.
You know, so just because you satisfy the one with, uh, you wanna sell the first one, or say you wanna sell the middle one?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. That lien is on all three of them. It's almost like a federal tax lien. Anything you own, it's against.
Right.
And you can't do nothing with it until you satisfied federal.
And, and would y'all, would y'all, would y'all not say that we are essentially saying we wanna be, we wanna be following code enforcement to the letter of the law, and we wanna give them the tools in their toolbox to have the ability to enforce liens and to do the right thing? But this, to me, undermines that effort, even if it's a one-time basis, because the moment we undermine it once, we're gonna do it time and time again.
But I don't see how when they paying for everything that's due to that property.
Because to what the, what the clerk just said is, is that this is, it's not just property A or B or C. It's property A, B, and C, and they all have a lien attached to it. It's just, it's just being presented as, I've cleared up the, I've cleared up the lien on this one. And, and I, I guess there could be liens that are property-specific, but I think, I think if there's a, a person that has multiple ownerships, they have multiple liens on multiple properties.
So that mean whoever bought property B have to clean all the liens? And eventually you have all the liens cleared off if they wasn't all attached, and it can be done. I saw it done in, uh, Fort Myers and Cape Coral, where they, where it did work, and it will work if we allow it to work.
Yes, ma'am. And Ms. Byrd, I would also say that this is the difference in some properties, getting back into the system, and some sitting idle and, and being eyesore for quite some time. And I would love to see a map that shows us what those look like, you know?
So.
They may jump out.
Clear, some, some properties eventually do not have their lien satisfied. They go through the tax deed process, and because of the liens, nobody wants to buy it at auction, so it is cheats to us, and it is cheats to us, all the liens get wiped out. So the, some liens are, some properties are cleared up through its treatment, and we did not get paid. But we get the property at least, and then we get some revenue from that.
But we didn't pay on this one. We're not trying to.
No, I'm not sa, I'm just saying that there.
I want him to understand that nobody's trying not to pay the liens or the deeds that's due the code enforcement. He's saying.
And, and I just feel, I feel that that's being stated, but I don't think that that's necessarily accurate representation of, of what it is. I think that there are liens against it. Someone, someone had cost incurred, and, and, and I don't understand the process. By the way, I'd also say that you probably have the momentum you need to get it. I don't know what everybody else thinks, but.
Barbara's always paying taxes?
We won't know. That's on a property-by-property basis.
So you?
Um, you know, they got tax details. Did they purchase from the tax detail, or they're just going to go to the tax?
They already purchased it, but they only purchased the one. Somebody else owned the other one, and they haven't paid off, but they're in the process of paying everything. Because they can't do anything regardless of what we, decision we make, until they pay off everything that's attached to that. They have, there was taxes, there was code enforcement, so there was different things that they have to pay off even before this process happened.
If you run from the tax detail, all the taxes are paid.
Mm-hmm. They, they did that, but it is code enforcement that she still, right, so she still have to pay that too.
She's using the process of getting them paid off.
Right.
I'll move option one.
No second.
Motion by Commissioner Swindle, second by Commissioner Harris. Is there any further discussion on this?
That's enough discussion.
Enough discussion, you had enough? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Congratulations, Ms. Byrd.
Thank you. To that family.
Yes, ma'am. We have, so we essentially have a new property owner.
That's right.
Good deal.
Put them on tax.
That's once they pay off everything, not until they pay off everything.
Okay. I'm telling y'all, this is a healthy discussion.
Wanna go business by district?
Hey, yes, I have a quite lengthy list tonight, sorry. I know, all right, I know. Just kidding, it's not that long. Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
You sit on the hospital board, no? Father.
The patient.
Okay.
Thirty-seven.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, is anyone here staying in tune? I was, I was informed this week that Clueston is the recipient of an urgent care center. Has anyone heard that?
I've heard we got an urgent care center, an airport, and there's something else.
It was the third one, yeah.
There's another major.
Yeah, it was something pretty nice. Okay.
Gosh, what is the third?
Let's focus on the urgent care center, and, and let me see if I'm out there with my, my concern about this. The urgent care center is going to be, um, uh, a Medicare, Medicaid, and insurance provider only. Eight to eight, eight AM to eight PM. I fear for our, am I wrong to fear for our hospital? These are the paying customers that basically this said individual private, a private company's gonna come in and provide health care, and our, our hospital's gonna suffer, because that's the paying customer that's gonna go to a different provider.
So, I thought you said they're gonna, they're gonna, I thought you said they're gonna take in Medicaid.
And Medicaid.
And so what happens is, is, is the folks that can't pay, and have no way of paying, they're gonna continue going there to our services, which I'm, uh, I get it, but now, you see where I'm going?
Is this private?
I, I think so.
Well, who, who okayed them to come in?
The city of Clueston, I suspect. I don't know.
I think it's called the United States of America, where you can buy land and conduct any business you want to. But correct me if I'm wrong, I just asked him for a twenty-dollar sticker on you, a four-wheeler, and I'm gonna be a socialist, but tell me, what are you driving at, Commissioner Swindle?
Um, I'm driving at, if we.
He's talking about the hospital.
So, I'm afraid that it's going to have detrimental effects to our hospital. Am I wrong?
Well, yeah.
I think that that's the potential. I think that it could be something that ultimately, if, if what you're saying, if I'm understanding correctly, I think it could be something that could potentially, depending on the volume of patients, put our hospital out of business.
No, is, that, that's where I'm going with this.
But I also think that it could make that, it just makes our emergency room that much more of a larger general practitioner's office, which I've been begging for that to be handled as well. And I don't know how we, I don't know how we handle that. So maybe they'll use the urgent care center instead of the emergency room. I don't know. I need to know more about it, Commissioner Swindle.
I would encourage the board maybe to dig in individually, unless all ask those questions. Um, I just, I sat with some of the folks on the hospital, in leadership of the hospital this weekend. They're seriously concerned about it.
They need to be.
I think that we need to do everything in our power to, to make sure that we're not making ourselves attractive to the clientele that have no ability to pay for anything, and we're providing the services for them.
They're going there now.
They are. But, but, we're increasing the footprint of Florida Community Health Center. We're increasing the footprint of the emergency room. We're increasing the footprint of, of adding a pharmacy to, to the FQHC. We're, we're, we're making it to where if, if you don't have a means, this is, you, you know, by the way, if you don't have a home, if you don't have, uh, a, a sightly looking RV, that's fine. Come, come to Clueston, come to Henry County, and, and we'll, we'll accommodate you.
Yeah. Okay.
'Cause when you go into one, you go into one in LaBelle, okay, you could wait two to three to four hours, and if you wanna pay for it, that's fine, but then everybody that's in there is normally free.
Is this the critical care facility that runs by the hospital?
So all the people.
No, you said LaBelle. You mean health department. You said the health department, LaBelle.
No, no, I think it's opinion.
In LaBelle. But everybody wants to pay.
Is this the Henry Regional Facility?
Henry Regional. Everybody wants to pay.
In LaBelle.
Or has Blue Cross Blue Shield, they might have to wait four hours to let everybody else in with Medicare, Medicaid. So all of them's leaving, you can drive to Fort Myers and come back before you can get into the, get your service.
I, I don't know. I, I, I only hear anecdotal sto, stories like that, but I would love, I would, I'm sure the numbers support.
I've talked to them, and they just shake their head, well, we can't get help.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Well, I would encourage, uh, my fellow board members to, to let's talk to the leadership of the hospital, and, and really dig in on what their thoughts, concerns, and provide whatever support is possible. It, it, because ultimately, it's gonna wind up costing us a huge chunk of money, so I'm afraid.
We're already paying a huge chunk.
That's right. It's gonna be a larger.
And anyway, we don't wanna really get too deep into that.
Okay. The other thing was, um, uh, at their request, this board and my boss, um, I attended, uh, weekly meetings, uh, in Belgrade for the Senate Bill Ten, money for the one-point-five million. Today, we had our second, we had our fourth meeting, but it was the second large group meeting, following up and, and giving the direction. Where simply what, what we have done between Henry County Schools Workforce Development, um, Palm Beach State College, and West Tech, we've identified three career paths, one of them being, um, an allied health medical, um, uh, career path, one of them being a, an industrial, like, mechanics and welding hel, uh, path, and the other being a logistical transportation. And, uh, what we're gonna do is we're gonna focus on those and talk about how the money can be used to, um, bolster those type of, of programs, and make them sustainable for the long haul for the Belgrade and, and Clueston, uh, region specifically. Um, we know that we have to be a little bit fluid. That Senate Bill Ten language did include specific, specifically, uh, money for airport, and how we're going to, uh, facilitate workforce development, education for an airport. We don't know yet. We don't know what that looks like. We don't know what the needs are gonna be. We don't know if it's gonna be an airframe, or if it's gonna be a power plant, and so, uh, we're just gonna have to kinda be fluid and, and develop that as it comes. But nonetheless, uh, we are preparing our data and getting ready for an RFP to be released, um, from the EDO, um, sometime within the next, hopefully sixty days. Just letting y'all know that I'm, I'm on it for you.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Commissioner Swindle, right in line with education. You know, we had the, the joint meeting today of Henry Glades. We know you were there. Uh, but, uh, uh, it looks like they're trying to work on an articulation agreement, or some version of that with, uh, ITech. And then, uh, Superintendent Paletti's pretty excited about, uh, FGCU and the language that they have. Scott Bass wasn't able to attend. Uh, we've, we've asked to make sure that we're able to have next time both superintendents available, so that we can ask those questions, but I think that something's gonna happen over there.
I think, I think that they are in the process. Um, FGCU basically, and, and specifically has, um, is very seriously wanting to look at the possibility of putting a teacher education.
Yes, sir.
Program there. And so, excuse me, what'll happen is, is we, for a good example is, is we have a number of teachers, you have a degree, but it's not in teaching. And being because of our, our, our rural location makes it nearly impossible for said individual to get to that point. And so FGCU wants to do a rural outreach there, and that will be a phenomenal footprint for our, our rural districts, so.
They're just waiting for them to sign off on it.
That's right. They're, they're waiting on some, uh, MOUs. Uh, Collier County has been the toughest one for, uh, Superintendent Bass, um, and only because of.
Logistics.
Logistics, and, but now they have come to the table with great excitement, and so, um, and, and, uh, my boss there today, I believe represented the fact that what we still wanna do is make sure we collaborate, uh, so that we don't wind up, um, interfering uh so that we don't wind up interfering with each other's training programs. And so no matter what they bring there, I'm hoping that they're looking at some sort of either machinist or diesel or something like that that I take uh can easily put there.
It's what they said, it's what you got going, they don't want to do.
Right, that's right.
They did talk about the diesel and they also talked about the numbers. Um, Mr. Paletti said Superintendent Paletti said that he pretty sure he have the numbers, so we're just waiting on them to sign off. And um I know a lot of you is gonna look forward to that, it's gonna benefit us very well.
Yep, awesome, okay, thank you.
Ms. Bird?
With that being said, um I'd like to thank the Henry County Sheriff's Department. Um, we was able to take a group of young ladies prevent preventing crime in the black community this past week and it was awesome. They learned a lot. They have classes pertaining just for the youth to go to along with the adults. Um, Officer Campbell attended with me and also um a couple Lamar officers came with us, but it was nice. They enjoyed themselves, so I hope that we can take a different group next year. We only start out with four, but you know, we would like to take more. Um, I think it's good for our young people to see outside the box that um that people live differently and there's things that can benefit them and help them. So it was a good training, they got to see other youth act interact and they did interact. We had some good representatives there with us, so I'm looking forward to it next year to take another group with us. So when you see them come up to you and ask you to sponsor them, make sure y'all support them and sponsor them because they are coming.
Okay, let them go.
They're coming to you first.
To Commissioner.
They're coming to you first.
I'm I'm really quick on a couple things. Um, so uh just at a staff level, I'm really excited about getting the timeline on the capital improvements list and us and us having that conversation as a group. Um, I got uh in trouble by a constituent today uh off of Kilpatrick in Flag Hole. Um, you and I have been out there, we need we need to look into that, Shane. Uh, I'll give you that address. I think it's gonna be an easy fix there, but it's it's quite so. He he feels that his uh he has just an extreme low spot in his in his swell, his front side swell. And uh and he's and he's just he's too wet too often, so I want to look into that.
I took a call from there from last week for you about a pothole.
A pothole, okay. Was it from a a Mr. Uh? What's his name?
I handled it.
Gosh darn it, I know who you're talking about. I cannot believe I can't remember this right now. He works at the tribe.
Negative.
Okay, I don't know who it was. Um, um, Kings Dairy Road, I talked to Shane about that. Um, Art Lawrence Road, I talked to Shane about that. Um, we used to have amnesty days, an amnesty day. I'm hoping that we can move to an amnesty week and I'm hoping that we can queue that up on the Fourth of July week. Um, because it you know, the holiday falls in the middle of the week. I think there'll be some people that are home. If they are traveling on that holiday weekend, they got that Sunday to Sunday to look at that. But um I I think that we ought to promote that as a as a hurricane cleaning, not a spring cleaning. But get your stuff out curbside, get it all out there, let's forgive it and let's get it cleaned up. Um, do you need that in the form of a motion?
Actually, we have something already in the works, so it's gonna be six amnesty days based on geographical region. We're working on the planning of that, it'll be between the months of July and August with a couple little week breaks in between. Ms. Hunter with our community and media relations is putting together the guidance document about what we will accept, what we won't accept. Uh, we'll have roll-off containers available for the public. Uh, we'll source some hot dogs, we're gonna have emergency management out there passing out information about how to be prepared. Code enforcement about what is compliant, what isn't compliant, what are some education materials to provide. Uh, we're also gonna be putting together a short survey about what's important to the communities so that they can give us some uh feedback back. We're talking about five, six questions that we can just drill in at our macro level so we can have that guidance document coming back. Those dates will be sent to the board uh very shortly as as well as with some of the markup so that you can help us start to spread the word about your geographic locations.
I know that's in place, could you also remind um the health department for their special need registration when you do that?
Yes, ma'am, that's a part of the emergency management outreach as well.
Thank you.
I'm not gonna counter that, I'm just gonna say that we do it on weekends, we run it up, the cost is gonna be overhead difference. I'd love to see what the numbers are that versus a week, but I just look everything through that lens. Um, I'm very frustrated with the regional planning council. Um, Charles and Jennifer know that because I've sent them seventy eight hundred emails with reference to wanting information about a three hundred thousand dollar grant. I think we got to the bottom of that today. But um y'all know I've 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 badgered the heck out of the promised zone designation. And um you just you know, just wanting to have follow-up on on what has that done for us, you know? How much uh have we seen come back into the coffers because of that designation? And um I don't think I don't think that it's it's really doing that much for us. Um, but um Ch- Charles is yeah positive about still finding out some details. And uh and we haven't given up all hope, but uh the RPC is a bit frustrating for me right now because one hand saying this happened and and the other hand doesn't even know if it's if it if that other hand exists, so. Uh, last thing for me is um something that I'm deadly serious about. I think all of us are are ridiculously concerned. Uh, I don't know if y'all heard about it, but it's city of Clueston jurisdiction, but there was a man that exposed himself at the at the water park. Have have you all heard about that?
Yeah.
I I did and he'd he'd pray for the police to come if I was there with my kids, I can tell you that.
Absolutely, absolutely, Commissioner Swindle. Commissioner Wills, were you aware of this?
I wasn't.
I wasn't.
Um, well, well, the reason why I bring this up is is not to poke any entity in the eye or say I can't believe that we don't know about this, but to to raise awareness of the fact that I I think and I know that y'all are gonna say, Commissioner Turner, maybe this is once again you reaching a little bit. But I'm telling you all, this directly ties back to code enforcement. The type of people that we're making it easy to exist in our county and what we're attracting. And and what do we want to be attracting? And I think some of the efforts that you're doing, Commissioner Swindle, with regards to increasing certifications, getting people to where they're gainfully able to be employed and and making it to where they're they're able to stand up. Uh, some of the things that you're doing, Ms. Ms. Bird, Commissioner Bird, with challenging us to make sure that we're we're removing the blights in different areas and 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 getting people into homeownership that I'm so vehemently, you know, saying why we don't need to do that. I'm not I'm not trying to contradict myself, what I'm saying is is that all of these things correlate. And we so routinely refer to as ourselves as having, you know, small-town values and being a quaint little area and all of that. And then we have something like that happening in one one of the most upstanding areas in this entire county that children are using on a daily basis. And and this is the type of things that I think, you know, I'm gonna tell you, it it's hard for me not to challenge where is this gentleman at right now? What is happening with him? What are we doing to make his life an absolute miserable hell so that so that he is not comfortable in Henry County? Because because and I know that this happens behind closed doors and we never hear about it, I get that. But this is deadly serious whenever it's whenever it's escalating to the area where it's happening in one of our our public parks and one of our nicest neighborhoods in the entire county. Does it minimize it if it happens in Hooker's Point, in an area where the socioeconomic status is a little bit less? But I'm saying if it is happening there, I can guarantee you it's happening elsewhere. And we've got to drill in on this and make sure that everybody understands this is not acceptable. So that's all I'm gonna say about that.
You go back to homeless and mental health and all kind of other problems that leads up to this stuff. You see it in the cities all the time.
Yes, sir. But we're not the cities.
No, but we.
We're Clueston and we're LaBelle.
I know, but this is what happens.
Yes, sir.
And I think mental health is the big problem.
Yes, sir.
And the jails are full of it.
We have to we have to follow up to make sure that that people understand this is not acceptable and they have support from us to follow through on this.
On the way here, there's two in LaBelle.
Yes, sir.
Uh, homeless people.
Mr. Chair, that's my comments for the night. Thank you very much for having the opportunity to speak. I've gotta roll.
Yep. I don't have any, I think we're good for tonight. Does anybody have anything in the public light to add?
One quick thing for me, but just to let that lady go first, of course.
I do have a couple of things that I want to talk and I would love for you to stay one minute.
Okay, I have about forty people waiting on me at another meeting, but go ahead.
It's one minute, I promise. You said exactly what people do we want to attract?
I'm sorry?
You said what people do we want to attract to Henry County? Think about that when you propose changes on the zoning for the agricultural areas. There is a big place that you're going that they are going, they are trying to, the people from Weekly Brothers. And they are changing the future use of the land for T buildings. Residential, then they have industrial and then they have um for the stores and businesses and things like mixed use, yes. And that's not what the people of Pioneer want. We want to keep our place rural residential. So that's something that you need to sit down with us at the meetings that we have and listen to the people. We do not want that. And we do not want a mining in the canal. That's the.
Sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't understand that, you don't want.
Mining in the canal that we have in the back.
Mining in the canal?
Yeah, they are trying to.
What they're doing.
They are requesting a mining rezon for the Eagle Canal and you have a you have a.
You know, the spoil that's been removed off of the canal that's adjacent, it's a forty-two foot canal? There's spoil that's adjacent to it the entire time. That spoil has been purchased and the gentleman that has purchased that spoil is wanting the options to be able to harvest and sell it. That's gonna come before us, I think, next board meeting.
On yeah, that's for the next meeting. We in Pioneer do not want that to happen. And in regards of the hospital that you were discussing recently a couple of minutes ago. Um, when I went with my son to the hospital, they misdiagnosed him and he ended up needing two surgeries in Miami for a broken bone that they didn't see he had exposed. So if you want the hospital to be able to compete with a private or semi-public or whatever it is urgent care, they need to improve their services. They need to have clean facilities. And I don't care if my insurance pays a hospital, an urgent care, or a private doctor, I will go to the best. So if they improve their care, I don't mind who belongs to. So that's and I believe that socialized medicine has no place in this country.
Yeah, I'm very sorry that happened to you that unfortunately and I and I and I hate that. I personally have used our hospital twice in the last twelve months. The only two times in my whole life I've used it in the emergency room and it was perfect, perfectly, it looked awesome, great care, great service, so.
Um, yeah, unfortunately, it was not the solution for me. It was uh it was an emergency, my son broke his bone, his finger. And I had to take him to Miami Children's Hospital where he required two surgeries and he was admitted because of the infection in the bone that they didn't realize that it was out.
Has that been to the LPA yet?
I'm sorry?
Has Weekly been to the LPA yet?
Uh, Weekly has tomorrow, um.
LP- LPA tomorrow?
Yeah, it's tomorrow, um.
Well, the LPA will listen to it and then they'll make a recommendation to the board.